Thank you guys for being here tonight. Today is February the 2nd, 2021. Our thought for today is gratitude is the heart of memory. That's a French proverb. I want to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. We're going to ask if Commissioner Henderson, if you would, lead us in our pledge and Commissioner Cowan, I mean, lead us in our prayer and Commissioner Cowan, lead us in our pledge. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everyone by the head, dear father, God, we covered for you this evening on this commissioner meeting, just to say thank you. We asking for all that you lead us and guide us and in the way that you will help us to go as far as conducting ourselves in this meeting. And we be so careful to give you all the praise and the glory, just we pray. In our Lord's sake, with Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Commissioner, have you had an opportunity to look over the agenda? I seek a motion of approval, please. Commissioner Sanders?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson. All in favor? All opposed? The pass is five to one. I mean, pass is four to one, I'm sorry. Next is citizen comments. This is opportunity that will allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. You may come up now. Yes?
Hi, my name is Dave McMichael and I live in Newton County at 734 Fenshaw Road, Covington, Georgia. My family, my parents and grandparents were, lived on Washington Street. I bought property in 1998 and built house and moved in in 99. And I love the community and the area that I live in. It's peaceful and quiet and the kind of place you want to live. I've enjoyed all my time here in Covington and after being here for several years, I moved my office here in about 2007. And so I've been operating our construction company since then till now, paying taxes in Newton County personally and McMichael's Construction. I just feel like I, as well as any other citizen of Newton County, must feel that when they go all in on an area and buy and build and grow with the community that we've got to have a feel that it will continue. And it's almost like being grandfathered in. There's some consideration for adding an outside shooting facility in this county. It would be upsetting to anyone, just as it is to me and my family, who enjoy the peace and the quiet. I bought 90 acres and then I bought another 123 acres and I live on Fenshaw Road and enjoying a butt, Fenshaw Lane and what might be something that's proposed in the future. And I just want to express my opinion and let you know that it doesn't seem right that something like that could even be considered in Newton County. And I want to just give you my opinion that I really don't want this outdoor gun shooting item to be allowed and under any zoning in Newton County. And that's pretty much my thoughts and our family's thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? You can come up and approach, please.
Thank you for listening to me. My name is Randy Dickerson. I live on Fenshaw Road. My fear is that an accident could easily happen. There's families all along this road. There's families in front of me where I live, beside me, all the way down the road. I know several of them, they have kids. My fear is that a stray bullet from this shooting range could take one of those kids' lives. So I strongly oppose that and I hope you will consider this when you're making your...
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? You can come. Guys, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Barrett. I live at 7 Cotton Street in Fort Lauderdale, Georgia. Many of you know me as the Chairman of the Democratic Party, but what I come for you tonight is a nonpartisan issue. The issue on the agenda is the resolution to not, to, the resolution to split the judicial circuit in the Alkobe Circuit. When you look back and look at our representation, barring the appointments by the governor, we have one elected official who has one vote that sits on the bench or represents us in the judicial circuit from Newton County. The judicial circuit is being decided by a county that is conjoined with us by a smaller county. When you look at the votes, the voters are not getting the voice that they need here in Newton County.
Yes, sir.
My name is Frank Herring. I've lived at Fenshaw Road for 30 years. I've lived for 30 years I've lived there and I just don't think it's a good idea for that thing. It's only a matter of time before something bad is going to happen. Somebody's, a stray bullet is going to get something, somebody's animal, somebody's house, somebody's kid. And there's another gun range right up the street, right up 212. Why don't they try to join up with them, get together and do something like that? But we're a residential area. We are not, you know, looking forward to this. It's, it's going to be dangerous. There's too many houses right there on both sides of the road, subdivisions on the other side of 36. It's, it's, it's just a matter of time before something happens and it's not going to be good. I'm sure it's not. But thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, my name's Tim Aiken and my family's lived in Newton County since 1800s. Got a little farm in South Newton County, raised black Angus cattle. I don't know who owns the property now, but someone's already shooting fully automatic rifles down there. Sounds like Vietnam. Vietnam's over. We don't need fully automatic rifles going on South Newton County. It's going to kill the value of our properties. So just like y'all consider to not change the zoning to allow under gun club in Newton County.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is opportunity for our citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. At this time, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening, sir.
My name is Dexter Morton. I bought some land, my wife and I bought some land about a year and a half ago on Fenshaw Lane. And I'm up here to, because we bought the land, she retires at the end of this year. We plan on building a house out there. And I come just to voice my opposition. I've come to voice my position because my land is directly across the street from where they're talking about building that gun range. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak tonight? And citizen comments about agenda topics? Agenda topics, agenda topics only. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Stephanie Lindsay. I reside at 75 Longview Drive, Oxford, Georgia 30054. My comments are two-fold, so I know I only have three minutes. First, about the gun range. I would hope that everybody here, board members, as well as the individuals that came forth with comments, would stay and listen to the presentation with an open ear. There is a gun... And the comparisons to other outdoor gun ranges, I believe that the concerns will be addressed. Two minutes on the issue of the resolution, that's before the board today. I'm an attorney here, everybody knows that. I've been practicing law for 20 years. I've been in the judicial circuit here, practicing for over 20 years. I've seen a lot in this circuit. There has been a push before now for the circuit to be split. We end up getting a fifth judge. There is now still other people that are going to be coming here tonight that are going to be paying attention. We're asking for the resolution to be passed. Passing a resolution doesn't mean that what we're asking for is going to happen, but it's a start to see what will happen. Once the resolution is passed, we still have to go through the General Assembly. So I'm asking for this board, as it normally does, to keep an o...
Thank you. That portion of our citizen comments are closed. Thank all of you who made comments tonight. Next on the agenda is the chairman's report. Tonight I am excited, we have a special guest here with us tonight. This young man has been around for a long time, you wouldn't believe it. He's still a lot, I think, a lot younger than I am, but he's been around for a long time and he's been doing a lot of great stuff in our community for a number of years. I want to bring him up tonight. His name is Tyrone Oliver. He is the Chairman of the Georgia Department of Juvenile Justice. Sir, if you would, come on up tonight. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I wanted to bring you up, this is the first week of Black History Month and I wanted to recognize you tonight for being a community leader. And man, you just, you, you've grown so much. I, you know, when I graduated high school, I think you might have, I think you was a sophomore or something like that, a freshman, one of the two, but I'm so proud of you for all the accomplishments that you have achieved. Can you tell us just a little bit about yourself and how you got involved in law enforcement?
Thank you, Chairman and other Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be for you tonight. It's an honor to be here back in Newton County. Originally from, not originally from Newton County, I moved to Newton County in 1993. My parents moved down from New York. I can't claim New York anymore. I think I lost that accent a while back. I might get jumped on if I claim it now, so. But went to high school, Newton County High School, graduated in 97. And then during high school, you know, three things I always said I wanted to do was law enforcement, funeral service business, and the military. And I've done all three thus far. I worked at Levitton St. Funeral Home in Conyers. Then I went off to the military. They told me I could be a mortician there, but they kind of, they kind of pulled the wool over my eyes a little bit. So I went in as a corpsman and then got out a year later after a little brief injury, started my career in Newton County Sheriff's Office in the jail as a jailer and worked my way all the way up. I worked under Joe Nichols and then Sheriff Brown and worked my way all the way up to Lieutenant. I kind of ran their investigation division and several other divisions and then went to Brookhaven and then Social Circle and now Governor Kemp appointed me to run juvenile justice.
Well, can you tell us a little bit about, I know you the first African American to hold a position as Chief of Police in Social Circle. Can you tell us a little bit about how you got there and that road and all the, you know, just a little bit about your story?
All right, yeah, Social Circle was kind of unique. You know, I was at City of Brookhaven, I was one of the first five hired at the City of Brookhaven to kind of get that police department and get that city started. And stayed there two and a half years and then the police chief job came up in Social Circle and I applied. I moved back here to Newton County. We had, was renting a place in Lilburn at the time. We moved back down to Newton County and so I was traveling from Newton County to Brookhaven. So I figured it'd be a good opportunity to get, get close to the home. And I applied and ended up getting the job out of 70, approximately 70 applicants that put in for the police chief job in Social Circle. And didn't realize at the time until I got there and a couple of members of the community and from Walton County mentioned to me that I was the first African American chief in Social, not only in Social Circle, but in Walton County.
In Walton County, yeah.
There hadn't been any other African American people that held that high, that higher position inside of Walton County. So I was kind of taken back by that, but you know, we did a lot of good things down there. I was there three and a half years. I was also designated as a Deputy City Manager for the, for the City of Social Circle and right at, toward, toward the end of my tenure there and then before I got appointed to juvenile justice.
Wow, wow, that's awesome. Now, can, now we do know, I know that you have an office here in Newton County. I know you utilize some of the space over at RL Cousins. Can you tell us a little bit about the footprint that you have here in Newton County, please?
Footprint we have here in Newton County, we have a community office here in Newton County, which is at RL Cousins School. I think it's been here for, I think it's been in that building for, I know, well over 20 years, easy. And the manager down there, she runs a good office, but that's one of 80. And so DJJ, we have about 80 community offices that we serve across the state of Georgia, which house, which we take care of our probated youth in the state of Georgia. And we have approximately 10,000 youth that we serve in the community. And we have 25 juvenile detention centers across the state, which we house approximately about 900 to 1,000 on a daily, on a daily average. And our budget kind of runs between, right now, we're still in legislative session, but we don't have any cuts, knock on wood, about $325 million budget and 3,100 employees.
Wow, wow. So, and I know, I know you push for time and I'm not going to hold you long, I know we push for time. So can you tell me what, what is a day like in, in a Commissioner's life? Can you tell us that?
Probably like many of yours, just busy, just, you know, when you got 300, over 3,000 employees, 25 facilities spread out across the state, 80 community offices spread out across the state, juvenile offenders that we have to ensure that their safety and well-being is taken care of as well as our employees, the safety of the community, you know, so you can imagine, there's a lot of meetings, a lot of strategizing, a lot of trying to move that needle forward as it relates to juvenile justice. You know, my main goal here, when I came and when the governor pulled me into his office when he appointed me, you know, he wanted to make sure that, that we also, not only we hold these youth accountable, but we also provide them opportunities so they can succeed and give them second chances in life. And so during the tenure here, that's kind of what my focus has been, is providing our young people with opportunities, with partnerships, with our reentry, for our jobs as concerns. We spend a lot of time on making sure we connect them with resources out there in the community, partnering with different communities. And hopefully here in this year in 2021, we're bringing a lot of stuff here to Newton County to help these at-risk youth to stay out of the juvenile justice system and the court system as well.
That's awesome, that's awesome. So I want to make sure everybody heard, had a chance to hear that. So the governor appointed you. What was that like?
Yeah, Governor Kemp appointed me. Actually, it was kind of a unique story. I was moving, moved from my house on 36 to my house that we're living at right now in Suri Chase in Newton County. And the date, the get close to the social circle, that's where I was at at the time. And the day that we moved, I was literally putting my sofas in, into the house and my phone rang. And it was, at the time, Tim Fleming was Chief of Staff, had called me with the governor and asked me about being appointed to the, to this position. And I asked him, I said, "How many, can I think about it for a minute?" And of course, he said, "I need about five minutes to make that decision." So the family was all there, the top of them, and we made that decision to, to join. I wasn't going to tell them no. Actually, I thought he was actually calling because a week prior, he appointed me to the POAB Board, which is the Peace Officers, the State Retirement for Police Officers in the state of Georgia. So I was appointed to that about a week and a half prior to this phone call.
Wow. Well, listen, I ain't going, well, listen, I want to tell you this, thank you so much for all that you do. I do know personally that you have lived in at least three of these districts up here.
Yes.
So, and I have a token of appreciation for you, but I want to share this with the Commissioners as well and I want to see, can we get a photo with you, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you.
Guys, if y'all don't mind, y'all come around and let's take a photo. I want to thank Commissioner Oliver so much for being here with us tonight. Thank him and his family, his lovely wife and his kids for all that they do in this community. Next, I got a, as we celebrate our 200th year, I want to make an announcement that the school system is celebrating their 150th birthday. So we want to make sure that we call our representatives and congratulate them on the great work that they're doing here in our community as well. Our next Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Kerr, County Manager, report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a few things that I would just like to bring to your attention and then we do have some slides here for you. Keep, Newton Beautiful has now relocated into Cousins Center, so if anyone is looking for their office, they're located in the wing of the building, same wing as the driver's services are located, but they're right across from the air entrance doors, right across from where the old band room is over there. So if you need to, same phone numbers and all, but if you need to go by their office, that's where they're located now. And they are working diligently with people who are signing up to help to pick up the trash and also to adopt the Adopt a Mile program. This past month, the Fire Department, as part of their public outreach, installed 476 smoke alarms into homes in the county. We applaud them for that and those smoke alarms are funded through a grant that we receive in order to, to put those up. Also, I wanted to mention that the senior services, just this past month, while we're not, while we're still not completely open because of the virus, they do continue to provide meals to our seniors and they've served over 4,200 meals just this past month. So it's quite a, quite an accomplishment and quite a feat for our senior services staff. We have purchased a new, a new spreader for our paving crew and as a part of that, also in relation to that, rather, our L-MIG list for 2021 has been approved by GDOT. So all of those roads that we had on there will be, will be paved this year. Also, and you're going to be hearing from James Brown, our Water Resources Director here in a few minutes, but, and he's going to show you some slides. But also, we did apply for and are, were approved to upgrade the Williams Street facility and so we're going, going to be receiving a $12 million loan at .86% interest, which is extremely low. And we're real proud that we're able to obtain that kind of funding for our public, the projects that we have that are improving our infrastructure. And so now we'll go ahead with the next slide, please. As we discussed here a few weeks ago, we have hired 10 temporary people who are out on our roads picking up trash. And we do have, go back to the slide for a second there, Brian, if you would. We also have, right now, we have one machine that we are able to use to pick it up and we've ordered additional equipment. But we do have 10 people now. Some days we're, they're temporary people and so some days we have only six people show up, but, but we do have three crews that are actually working and they've been concentrating on the west side of the county. And after this week, they'll be spread out between, into some of the other areas of the county as well as to continue on the west side. But there's some photos of the folks who are working, picking up the trash, so. And hopefully we're able, we're beginning to make a little bit of a difference. We, it's, it's going to take some time, so we ask for your patience, but we are working towards getting that trash cleaned up. So next slide, please. And this is a Cornish Creek expansion is underway and this is a project out at the Water Resources Department out at Cornish Creek. And so James, if you wanted to like to step up and tell the folks about what we're looking at here, please, I'd appreciate it. Could you hold off on the, thank you. And again, James Brown is our Water Resources Director.
Good evening, everyone. We just wanted to bring everybody's attention to, just how much the, how much we've progressed with all the rain. Being it's the rainy season this time of the year, as much dirt they have to turn over and get down to the, to some good foundation down in a very swampy area. I just kind of wanted to bring the board aware of how much progress we have made so far. I was anticipating from my last talk with the construction team that we was approximately about two weeks behind schedule. To my surprise, we're right on schedule. So we're still looking at a 22, 2022 completion date. As you can see, a lot of the pipe work, infrastructure has already been delivered and they are doing some significant groundwork and the next one. And they've already cleared out a good portion for the transmission main that's leaving the facility to allow us to pump out additional water. So they got a lot of the tree removed, they're doing some pre-prep on the ground to start digging. So it's, it's a lot of things that's moving and it's, we're, we're in very good shape.
So when this expansion's completed, James, this will give us the 25 million... So when this expansion's completed, James, this will give us the 25 million gallons a day capacity, or ability, is that correct?
Well, it, yes, we will be able to safely treat 25 million, but we also have the capacity for future expansions. We put in the infrastructure currently to expand as, as much as 35 million.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And that's, oh, I'm sorry, we do have the COVID-19 snapshot for the county, and you'll see that we, we still have quite a few cases and continue to have them. This is as of yesterday. You'll see Newton's total cases, eight, a little over 8,000. We have had unfortunately 164 deaths, and you can see the other information that we have there. Next slide, please. And this shows the breakout by age, for age distribution, and also by ethnicity. Next slide, please. All of this information is available on our website as well as a Gwinnett Newton-Rockdale website, and of course, we all encourage you to wear your masks as much as you can, and also to try to practice social distancing, continue to wash your hands frequently. My understanding is we will be obtaining some more of the vaccines. We're still in Phase 1A here, so that would be to continue to give, for any first responder personnel, public safety personnel that have not received, and then also nursing or healthcare personnel, as well as those people who are at high risk and the aged individuals that need the vaccine. However, supplies are low, we don't have, there's not an overabundance of supplies, and the distribution for those supplies is determined by the governor's office, but we are and will be receiving more. Last that I heard was that there is an expectation that we will be receiving much larger supplies with the introduction of the third vaccine in the early spring months. So, they're continuing to get them. There is a center in Rockdale where you can sign up for the vaccinations. Currently, we're in discussions with the Health Department about opening other possible sites for citizens here, but that has not come to pass at this point, and that's mostly because of the supply issue, so.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I think, one or two, maybe three questions. First question is the water plant at William Street. It was, I understand at some point that we were thinking about just bypassing William Street and running the line directly from Lake Barner, because I understand that at William Street, you have to take the water from, maybe from the river of Lake Barner, put it in the pond, then suck it over to William Street, and I was, I was just, just trying to figure out why we're maybe spending $12 million to do a plant that we could easily bypass. And so, just trying to get somebody to maybe answer that question for me.
James, do you want to address that for me, please? We have, there were several discussions about William Street, about what was going to be done, and there was even some discussion at one point about closing William Street and maybe putting a storage tank there, but I think the engineers that we had that worked on the project came to a different conclusion. Maybe, James, you could elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, what we did, we initially evaluated using, doing away with the William Street facility and putting a ground store, a ground storage tank in its place. However, the hydraulics did not work out the way we envisioned it would, and also that the state would not give us gallon for gallon transfer. It would be more like one gallon for every five gallons we give them. So we would have lost a significant amount of water capacity by doing that, so this would be the best option for the community for the long haul.
Okay, thank you. Second question, just to look, thank you. Appreciate you what you're doing. Concerning the COVID-19 and, and the distribution, I, I received several calls concerning that from our, from our seniors and peoples here in Newton County, and they said, well, what are we doing? Newton County Board of Commissioners, and to try to make it easier for our citizens, especially the seniors, one who are not a computer savvy, and I'm one of those people. What are we doing in order to help them to get in line, to get their shot, the first shot, and hopefully the other, the third vaccine come through, you just have one shot? But what are we doing? And the last piece of the question is, if you look at the TVs and you see the report come out here, so many, and they say that typically the people of color are the ones who do not receive, are not receiving their vaccine as they should, and we need to do better. So how do we, Newton County, can assist our citizens in making sure that everybody who wants to, regardless of where they may live, or how much money they make, be able to get a vaccine to help them?
Well, the, the way that the system is set up is that each individual is required to call and make their own, you know, make their own appointments, because there are, there is some information that they, that the, whether it's the Health Department or the hospital, or whoever needs to obtain from that individual. So largely, it's left up to the individual citizen to schedule their own appointments. Now, one of the things that we are doing is helping, we do have senior citizens who are not very tech savvy, and so what we've done is we are working with the Health Department to set up a, the ability at our Senior Services Center for the seniors to come to the center, and then the staff at the, at the Senior Services Building can help those individuals to schedule the appointments. And so, but, and, so that's, that's what we're doing at, at this point. That's what we have the resources to do, and so that's, that's what are the extent of what we're doing at this point.
Just one last follow-up question, maybe, Mr. Chairman. We need somewhere where it's, you know, not only at the senior services, a senior center, yes, we need there too, but we also need other than the senior services, a facility where, whereas our citizens or anybody can come and maybe get a little bit of assistance to get in that line for those shots. And what I'm suggesting, and I'm suggesting this because they've been calling me and saying, you need to do something. I'm suggesting, why can't we supply a, a person or persons over at this night for, say, for three or four hours, for, and give that time that people may want to come in, and just so they can assist them in signing up? Thank you.
Well, I think it's also, I think we need to let the board know also that we've been working really hard to try to help provide space.
Yes.
And, and the issue is not that we can't provide the space, the issue is that there's not enough vaccines that the state is sending to, to the county, and we are hoping, we just did a call with the Health Department, and we, and we're hoping that this, the new vaccine, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is a one-dose vaccine, we're hoping that we, that we, we would get a, a large number of those vaccines to come to the county soon. I was told, now, I was told this, that it may be early March before those vaccines arrive here, so I just want to put that information out there as well.
We do have a, a site over, actually at Cousins, that we were looking to see about creating a drive-through type center, but the Health Department did not think that was too good, and they did not want to pursue that, primarily because of the fact that the individual, once someone receives a vaccination, that there is a 15 or 20-minute waiting period after they've received the vaccination to make sure that they don't have any kind of an allergic reaction. So the, so it, it requires that you have a building where people can be in and sit down and wait, and that there's trained medical staff there who could administer whatever would need to, to, and i- if they did need emergency help, that they would be there to, and able to, to help them. So, but we are looking at that as well, other spots that we could offer, that we can offer up, but at this time, the Health Department has not indicated that they would be, that they needed our help.
Correct. If I may, it's not, I mean, we understand that you have to get an apartment, and therefore the problem is for a lot of seniors, just getting an apartment to get in line. In other words, I made contact, even though they may not have the vaccine, according to what I've been told, you still have to get an apartment, and once you get an apartment and get your ID number, then you go to wherever they, if they have any shots or medicines put in your arm, you take that to them. People, the problem is, they can't get in line in order to get, I guess, the number or whatever they got to get, take to the next phase of them getting a shot, and we know there's a long waiting line, but you still can't get in line, and that's what they're asking for, if it was someone to help them get in line, so they may be able to get their shot at some point.
Thank you, sir. Oh, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Guys, next on the consent agenda, before we approve it, I want to thank Mr. Ronnie Glover, Keishon Ross, and Jerry Sivio for your willingness to serve. I don't know if any of you guys are here tonight, but we know and recognize people that are serving. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve on these boards, thank your willingness, for your willingness to serve this community, thank you so much. Commissioner, I seek a motion of approval, please. Commissioner Sanders.
Before we do that, Commissioner, Chairman, I have items on the consent agenda, items 9C through 9J, that I would like to be removed and placed as separate items on the agenda for discussion.
What number?
Items 9C through 9J.
Can I get a second to that? I'm sorry, Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I understand that your request to be a motion to amend the, the agenda for that purpose?
Yes, based on the consent agenda policy, there, there's items that you are deemed up for discussion before the consent agenda norm, and the chairman is supposed to ask if there are any items on the consent agenda that you would like to be removed for, up for discussion. So that's what I'm requesting, those items to be up for discussion. And I'd like to form a motion to have those items up for discussion. I move that those items, 9C through 9J, be up for discussion and placed on the agenda as separate items.
Is there a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Sanders, and second by Commissioner Henderson, that we remove item 9C through 9J. She said 9C. 9C through 9J.
Is there any preference as to where those get moved on the agenda?
Yeah, I, I'll take care of it. I'll take care of it. We're going to remove them first, if they want to remove them. So it's been motion by Commissioner Sanders, and second by Commissioner Henderson, that we remove items on the agenda, 9C through 9J. Any, any discussion?
Yes, the reason why I'm requesting some of the items to be removed, because some of the items were done incorrectly based on the policies, and so they were not brought before the board. So that's why I'm requesting some of these items to be removed.
Can you explain yourself, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Items 9D and 9E, your appointment for JDA, based on the policy of the JDA authority from, that was actually adopted, the county ordinance adopted on 3299, the Board of Commissioners as a whole selects two members to serve on the JDA Board. One member of the JDA Board must be a member of the Board of Commissioners. Members serve for four terms unless the member sooner ceases to serve on the Board of Commissioners. It's supposed to be brought before the Board of Commissioners to determine who will sit on that board, not just thrown actually on the agenda, on the consent agenda, based on the policy, the law.
And that's item number 9C, right?
9C, and also there's, with 9D as well.
9D.
I do, I mean, nine, yes, nine, that's item number 9D, appointment for JDA, item number 9E, item number 9F, and 9C and all the other ones, I just had a few questions on them, but I did speak with our county manager, he eloquently actually gave me some information, but I'm pretty sure that some of our constituents might like to have some questions. I had some that had questions in regards to those items. So that's why I'm requesting for them to be taken off of the consent agenda versus us voting for it as a whole, so the citizens can be aware of what we're voting on.
Next, 10B, 10C, 10D, 10E, 10F, 10G, 10H.
Mr. Chairman, could you state those again, please?
I was going to start at 9C, and go from, I'm going to make that 10A, all the way down to item number 9J, we're going to make that 10H. Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda with these changes.
There's a motion already on the floor.
No? So we got to prove, we still got to prove the consent agenda?
Elena Sanders approved the consent agenda based on the changes that were made per the commissioner, for the chairman.
It's been motion by Commissioner Sanders, and second by, can I get a second? And then second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Pass 3-2. Item, um... So no, she made a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes. Yeah, yeah, thank you, sir. So now, so now we need to, a motion that proves that we have the agenda. Okay, okay, okay. So, Commissioner, we want to make a motion also that this, this agenda be amended to accept those changes. those changes.
So moved by the chair, and what he's, oh, y'all didn't hear that. So I'd like to make a motion that we...
Amend the agenda.
Amend the agenda.
With the changes.
With the changes that were made.
Yes. Can I get a second? Any discussion, guys? How y'all doing tonight?
Very well, thank you.
It's been motion by Commissioner Sanders, and second by Commissioner Henderson. Thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman Vanez, Commissioners, Mr. Kerr, Ms. Smith, I've
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
been talking to you, and I guess you're not Megan Martin. I didn't think so, but now you're here. My name is Nazita Davis, I'm legal counsel for the Bass Reeves Gun Club. Thank you for allowing us to appear today on the agenda to petition the board to initiate
Next item is item number ten, discussion consideration of petition to the Board of Commissioners to initiate a text amendment to the Newton County zoning ordinance.
a text amendment to the Newton County zoning ordinance to allow an outdoor shooting range in the AR zoning district.
Who you gonna do that for?
By letter to all of you dated January eleventh, I provided information regarding the Bass
Judy? Is Judy here tonight? Judy's not here?
Reeves Gun Club, memberships, affiliations, information on the proposed facility, and
This petition is being presented by Attorney Nazita S. Davis.
the research that we conducted regarding other metro Atlanta county zoning ordinances
Judy is here to answer any questions the board might have, but this is at the request of Attorney Davis.
with populations similar to Newton County that had outdoor shooting ranges. I have with me this evening Mr. Colin Matt, who is the president of Bass Reeves Gun Club, and Attorney Stephanie Lindsay, who I'm sure all of you know is also our counsel on this matter. I would just like to turn this over briefly to Mr. Matt to provide some information on Bass Reeves Gun Club.
All right. Thank you, Nazita. Hopefully I'll speak enough so that, you know, everyone in the back can hear as well. So the Bass Reeves Gun Club was founded in 2015. It's a pro Second Amendment, five oh one C three nonprofit organization. Bass Reeves Gun Club is interested in acquiring two parcels of land located totaling ninety point two five acres in southern Newton County to build a private members-only outdoor shooting range containing a training center and a sports shooting facility. The two parcels of land which are located on Fincher Lane are approximately one mile from the intersection of Georgia Highway two twelve and Georgia Highway thirty-six and are zoned in the AR agricultural residential district. Our mission is to advocate for the preservation and protection of the people's Second Amendment rights to own and bear arms. We educate people on firearm safety and marksmanship, and promote competitive shooting sports programs which support personal development and teamwork. One of Bass Reeves Gun Club's key initiatives is to introduce the youth to competitive shooting leagues that award trophies and medals to individuals and team competitors. To that end, we are members of the National Shooting Sports Foundation, which is a national organization. We are members of the civilian marksmanship program, the CMP, and our instructors are certified instructors, so we take safety very, very seriously. Our instructors are members of the United States Concealed Carry Association, USCCA, and our instructors are also certified by the NRA as certified firearms instructors. We are very proud of our track record of safety. February twenty-eighth will be our sixth year in service to the community, and we've had zero firearms incidents. So we take safety very, very seriously. I'll now turn it over to Nazita, who will talk about our petition for the initiation of a text amendment to Newton County zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, as I mentioned, in an effort to assist Newton County Commissioners and the Planning Committee in crafting a text amendment, we did conduct research and we provided links to the Buonnet, Cherokee, and Fayette County zoning ordinances relating to outdoor shooting ranges that would serve possibly as a model for Newton County to craft the text amendment. The document that was passed out to everyone is, provides a little bit more information on topics of interest that we wanted to address today that was not fully detailed in the January eleventh letter. Some things we wanted to talk about are the location of occupied residences in relation to the boundaries of the shooting range. And the last two pages of that document I passed out will show the actual two parcels. The first document is in red, and you will see the other properties around it, and I will be talking a little bit about those properties. Also, the last page is just an example. That document is not drawn to scale, but it gives an example of how we plan to set up the gun range. So, as Mr. Matt mentioned, the outdoor gun range would be on two parcels. There's the fifty-seven plus five-two acre parcel, that's the larger one on the right side of your document, and then the smaller one is to the left side. On the fifty-seven point five-two acre side, there are no occupied residences adjacent to the property. There is one property that is at the top of Fincher Lane that has a small building on it that resembles a house. The owners live in North Carolina, and it's on eleven point seven acres, but that building, that location is not occupied. And below that is an address called, according to the tax assessors, is called Highway thirty-six. That property is on two hundred and twenty-two point six nine acres, and it's directly behind that property and its trees. There's no occupied residences on that property either. That actually would serve as a very good buffer for sound. There is a Fincher Road property that is directly across the street from the Fincher Lane to the fifty-seven point five-two acre parcel. There are numerous trees on that property and no occupied residents on that property. With respect to the property adjacent or near the smaller side, the thirty-two point seven-three acre parcel, there is an adjacent property at five twenty-two Fincher Lane, and that's on two point two seven acres. There is a national, a natural tree buffer there, and that is the side of the shooting range that will have our skeet trap and shooting fields and the five hundred, five hundred yard rifle range. That side will be phase two of our project, and most of the, pardon me, most of the shooting will be on the fifty-seven point two acre, fifty-seven point five-two acre side, as you can see from the diagram. That's where the pistol bays are and the clubhouse. There's also behind that five twenty-two Fincher Lane property, an address listed as Bohannon Road, which is a hundred and three acres. That property has no occupied residence on it or buildings on it as well, and it's nothing but trees. It's an excellent natural sound buffer there as well. And then we have five eighty-eight Fincher Lane, five eighty Fincher Lane, which are di, across the road from the smaller side, the thirty-two plus side, but it's not adjoining. And there's another property that's listed as Fincher Lane that is on the other side of the road, that is one hundred and twenty-three point one six acres, that does not have an occupied residence there. There's trees on that property as well. And there appear to be three additional properties on Fincher Lane that are further toward, down toward Fincher Road, but they are not adjacent to the properties, adjacent to the properties that we're looking to build the gun range on. And there was, I think, a question or a point that was raised earlier by Attorney Lindsay. As everyone knows, there is South River Gun Club that is here. There are, it looks like a subdivision, but there are residences less than one eighth mile from the three hundred yard rifle range, and you can look at that on the South River, on the flat map, and see all those residences there. And because of the way the gun ranges are built, and that will be something we will be following, working with NSSF consultants, following the NRA Range Source Manual, you will build the gun range a certain way so that the rounds will go into the berms. They will not be going over, they will not be going, and then you will also build down in the valley in terms of the gun range, and I'm gonna let Mr. Matt talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Similar to South River, there also is a Griffin Gun Club, and Griffin Gun Club has residences adjacent to the property, but because of the way the property is built and the way the gun ranges are built, there's no issue of safety and rounds getting out of the range. So I wanna turn this over now to Mr. Matt again to talk about the noise abatement plan.
Thank you. So as we previously mentioned in this petition, Bass Reeves Gun Club is a member organization of the National Shooting Sports Foundation, NSSF. So we'll consult with the NSSF recommended acoustical experts, and we'll follow the NRA Range Source Book to determine the proposed range design plan for competitive shooting that is most effective in noise diminishing and also to protect neighboring landowners. We're not, you know, without being sensitive to that as well. The following sound attenuation techniques will be used to reduce noise. One, we will build our entry roads significantly into the property before one gets to the shooting bays, thus creating additional distance from adjoining properties on Fincher Lane and reducing sound. Our normal operating hours will be seven days a week with daylight only hours for shooting. Shooting will not begin before nine AM and will end by five PM, when not on daylight savings time, and by seven PM when on daylight savings time. Further, there'll not be a lot of shooting activities Mondays through Fridays due to the members' work schedules, so the majority of the shooting activities that'll take place will occur on Saturdays and Sundays. We will excavate three below the ground to build the shooting bays, thus creating the shooting bays within a valley, which will additionally reduce sound to neighboring owners and also provide a buffer for the rounds to stay within the range dimensions. Number four, the backstops of the shooting bays will be a minimum of ten feet high, and the side berms of the bays will be a minimum of eight feet high, which will additionally reduce sound to neighboring owners. There are numerous trees on the property, and the neighboring properties also have numerous trees which act as a natural buffer to additionally reduce sound. One of the reasons that we are looking at property in Newton County is because we have a growing membership. We have nine hundred members currently in our, in our chapter, and, you know, quite frankly, we don't fit anymore in the spaces that we train and practice in. So we have been five-year members and really been supported by South River Gun Club, and they can also attest to the track record of safety that our organization has. We also recognize Newton County as a viable location because most of our membership are here to the east of Atlanta, in Atlanta, Conyers, and Covington. So it's a centralized location for our members to visit a range and be able to train safely and practice, and also enjoy the shooting sports and their Second Amendment rights. So I'll turn it over now to Attorney Davis, who will talk a little bit about the economic impact, the positive economic impact that this shooting sports facility can have in Newton County.
As mentioned in my January eleventh letter, the facility will host competitive shooting leagues such as matches, such as the Glock Sports Shooting Foundation, we call it GSSF matches, IDPA, USPSA matches, Action Pistol. The facility would bring jobs to Newton County, will need people to work on the property, as well as it will bring favorable revenue to the Newton County community through increased spending in local retail shops, lodging, restaurants, gas stations, and other businesses. Just to give you an example for the GSSF match, we actually do not have any GSSF matches any longer in the metro Atlanta area. The closest one is Dawsonville, Georgia. They used to have one, they used to host it at South River Gun Club, and then it moved to Griffin. Now there aren't any, but GSSF matches are very popular with families who come out and shoot. So, for example, Talladega this year, and Talladega, Alabama hosted approximately two hundred and fifty-four people, Dawsonville hosted approximately two hundred and twenty-eight people, and Savannah, Georgia hosted approximately a hundred and ninety-five people at this GSSF match. And when people go to the matches, people, the matches are usually two days, and lots of people, they travel between the neighboring states to shoot these matches. I mean, we're like one GSF competitive shooting family. And many people work as range officers at these matches as well, which means that if they're gonna stay for two days, they will have to have lodging. And with the lodging, that will encompass like two nights of lodging to stay for these matches. So for instance, if you have here in Covington, a hundred and fifty people who attend the match, and they rent a room with two people in the room, looking at hotel rates here, I think La Quinta Inn is at a hundred and seven dollars a night, Hampton Inn a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a night for seventy-five rooms, that would yield sixteen thousand fifty dollars up to nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for lodging just for that one weekend. And their additional revenue would be generated that same weekend, and that's not including taxes, of course. Additional revenue would be generated that weekend from those individuals patronizing restaurants, the gas stations, the grocery stores, drugstores, and other retail stores in Covington. And if there are local matches like USPSA, IDPA, or Steel Challenge, those matches would still generate significant revenue by people patronizing the restaurants, gas stations, and other retail stores. So we thank you for your consideration for this text amendment, and if you have any questions for us, we're here to answer them.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I take it that you guys haven't bought the property yet?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You have not bought the property yet?
We have not.
So it's a contingent sale contract?
Absolutely.
So, there's no economic loss to you if this is not, if there's not a text amendment to the board, to the county ordinances? There will not be any economic loss to you, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, but there are other significant losses.
I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure some things out here. This question would be for our zoning person, Judy. The fact that they're gonna offer competitive tournaments and things like that, will that make this a commercial use of this property?
And if there are local matches like USPSA, IDPA, or Steel Challenge, those matches would still generate significant revenue by people patronizing the restaurants, gas stations, and other retail stores. So we thank you for your consideration for this text amendment, and if you have any questions for us, we're here to answer them.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I take it that you guys haven't bought the property yet.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You have not bought the property yet?
We have not.
So it's a contingent sale contract?
Absolutely.
So there's no economic loss to you if this is not, if there's not a text amendment to the board, to the county ordinances? There will not be any economic loss to you, is that correct?
That's correct, but there are other significant losses.
I know. I'm just trying to figure some things out here. This question would be for our zoning person, Judy. The fact that they're gonna offer competitive tournaments and things like that, will that make this a commercial use of this property?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Should, that would be things that we would set up in the text amendment. It would be considered certainly not a residential use of the property, but we do have provisions in some of our agricultural zoning districts and our commercial zoning districts that would allow for a special use permit to potentially move a project forward. But we would have to evaluate it under the same circumstances as a commercial permit.
So this would have to be a conditional use permit?
That would be my suggestion to the board should you choose to move forward. I have researched a handful of ordinances. The information regarding outdoor shooting ranges is very limited in zoning texts. There's not a lot of counties or local municipalities that allow it. I did look at the ones that was offered by Ms. Davis, and I found a handful more, but every one of those do it as not by right, but as a conditional use permit.
Okay. Just a comment here. My daughter lives in Morgan County. The guy next door owns ten acres of land, and he wears it out every weekend with his gun. Don't get me wrong, I don't have any problem with long rifles, but I do have a problem with, I mean, there is a noise problem with continuous shooting. It's just something I don't like. It does disturb the neighborhood. Now, let me ask you this question here. Is there water in this area here?
I have not looked to see if there was public water there for a fire hydrant and so forth. Maybe, I don't know if any of your members that live on that road could tell us if they're on well or if they're on public water.
I looked at the county map. There seems to be a lot of subdivision activity down there. My gut feeling is it's an area that's gonna be developed over a period of time. If a gun club's allowed, we're gonna be dealing with complaints all the time. So I'm not, I'm not being dismissive of your requests, I'm just saying that the fact that the area is probably destined to grow, because from what I see down there, that is an area that looks like subdivisions will grow in that area, is gonna have a adverse impact because everybody that complains about the gun range will come here. And don't get me wrong, I don't mind listening to complaints, but after a while, you get kinda wore out with them. So I'm just saying, I just wanted to ask those questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan, if I could also, we have focused a lot this evening on a particular property, and we've focused a lot on a very organized and accredited group that has brought this petition forward. But if you do a text amendment to the ordinance, it's not about one property or one group. It would open that use up in that zoning district or districts that we chose for other petitioners to move forward. And a little bit of the information that I did share, because I know some of you may not be as familiar with our zoning maps, that the AR zoning district is our most common zoning district. And not to prejudice for this particular project or for this particular piece of property, but our AR zoning is agricultural residential. It is designed and for large agricultural lots with residential homes on it, you know, these estate lots and so forth. So as you move forward in your decision of making a text amendment, if that is your choice, just recognize it's not about a great group of people, it's not about one particular property. It is about establishing legislation that would allow any petitioner to move forward if they can meet that criteria.
So let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Right now, this is in an AR zone?
Correct.
And if we make a text amendment, that opens up shooting ranges for AR zoning?
Which is located in every district we have, yes, sir.
And that's the majority, the largest part of Newton County?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards is next.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Judy, I know you hit on the fact that this is not about, what's before us tonight is not actually about Bass Reeves Gun Club, that fine organization. It's about allowing a shooting, a place for outdoor shooting anywhere in any of our districts in any that butt up against to have this particular zoning. So that's what we're actually voting on. It's not, doesn't have to do with this organization. They do have a spot pinpointed, but it has more to do with allowing this in the entire county. I can tell you that this text amendment would allow South River Gun Club to expand exponentially. I get complaints from South River Gun Club folks all the time, and that comes from District One and District Two folks. I get those complaints from my district and District Two. So that's kinda what we're voting on tonight, is not a particular organization, but what could happen countywide? And do we want, I know I don't, I wouldn't care, I'm a hunter, and I discharge firearms and when I hunt, and even when I sight my rifles and my pistols or whatever I'm using, but to the extent of automatic weapons fire, semi-automatic weapons fire, high-powered rifles, I live within, I live within about a mile and a half of a shooting preserve, and it's shotguns only. And the constant shooting, it can be a problem. I get complaints about this particular shooting preserve all the time, and it's very near my home. So, but in relation to this particular property, Mr. Milton owns right across the street, and as he came before you earlier, very early in the meeting tonight, he told us that he and his wife, Mr. Milton, are you still here? Mr. Milton, his wife, bought this particular piece of property directly across the road from the proposed property, and this was their dream. They saved their money, they dreamed they'd retire, they're gonna build a home here. And now we're thinking about putting a shooting club or shooting sport there. I've talked to numerous landowners in the area, numerous. They have grave concerns. I looked on Google Maps, within one mile of this particular property, there are hundreds and hundreds of homes. The subdivisions across Yellow River, the subdivisions across Thirty-Six, and subdivisions even on out to Two Twelve. There's someone who's shooting, it's just a regular, ordinary citizen out there, that's on this power line that's adjacent to this property. He shoots automatic weapons every weekend. While I was down there, a neighbor called me, or someone from that area called me the other day, and I went to Red Oak Church, which is about a mile and a half away, drawing a straight line from this particular, from where this gentleman or this person was shooting. And it was, it was just, I don't know how to describe it. It was just not good. It was very disruptive. If you were trying to enjoy the outdoors, it'd be very, very disruptive. So the property values, there's a gentleman with property in the area that he plans to petition this board to build homes there. And that would, I've done some research, property values decrease that are very close to, or not even very close, but within a mile of these shooting-type facilities. So it creates, it creates a lot of problems for us. But the biggest problem is, is like I said, not Bass Reeves Gun Club, our problem is across the county. What does this open up for us as a whole if we make this text amendment? So we gotta think about that as we move forward, too. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Sanders?
I just have a few questions. I do have a license to carry, but I apologize, I'm not familiar with the gun range that Commissioner Edwards spoke of. So what would make, I know that your gun range is private community, right? You have to have, be a member of it? So what makes it different from the gun range that's already in the area and that you do receive complaints? What is done to minimize those complaints? What is gonna be done? Because if we have two, and we get complaints for one, to be, what is being done?
If I may, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The South River Gun Club, and I tried to look up the date that it actually began, but I wanna say it was sometime in the fifties. In two thousand and two, the state of Georgia changed its law that protected existing gun clubs. In nineteen seventy-one was the year that Newton County incorporated our zoning ordinance. So the South River Gun Club was legally existing prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen seventy-one. It is limited to where it cannot expand. That is part of its legal non-conforming, is that it cannot expand. And as Commissioner Edwards mentioned, if we did amend a text, it would, by right, then they could follow along with whatever the guidelines were and see if they could expand as well. But they are protected under state law, and any of the noise or, I forget the complaints, but I can pass the law to y'all tomorrow, that those things, it cannot be held against that, an existing club that was legal and existing prior to two thousand and two.
So the current gun club, is that open to everyone? Anybody can go there? That's also a private member, too?
I'm not sure.
It is members only.
Okay, so is there, do we know what the qualifications are to be a member of that gun club? I'm sorry, I'm educating myself on it, so that's why I'm asking these questions, so I can know.
I would not know. They may be able to share information.
Okay. Which is similar to the one, what you guys are doing, okay.
Anyone else? Hold on. No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna ask if this text amendment is approved, and I guess this is a question for Judy. Is there a way to specify, the same reason the Southwest Gun River Club isn't able to expand, is that something that you can put into the text amendment?
You could not prevent someone, if you're, if you open it up as a use, and we set parameters, and we don't know what those parameters could be. It could be you have to have X amount of acres. It could be you have to, all your shooting stalls have to be so far off a property line. Again, I don't know what those regulations would look like, but South River Gun Clubs holds land on both the north side and the south side, and would, which would be more land total than the property they're currently looking at. So we would not be able to prevent them from being able to have the same rights. Now, they would have to come before the board if it was a conditional use, but you would also have to have a valid reason as to why you would not let them expand.
Okay, I think that answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, one more, then I'll come back to you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I think one of the things when you're shooting a gun, especially into, I think, a mound of dirt, is that the lead from the guns sometimes, or if it rains or something, it becomes an environmental, I would say, problem. And so do we have any idea how many wells it might be over there? How most people getting their water is from counter water or is it from real water? Or if somebody else has suggested, is it close to a creek of sorts?
The only thing that I was able to find in the pros and cons of indoor and outdoor gun ranges, I've did a lot of reading on this particular subject, and it appears as though some of the concerns, if you're operating an outdoor gun range, would be the retrieval of lead and having that potentially left out in a field.
If I may just add on to that, one reason why I brought the concerns, and I think some people have had me, I've said it before, was the city cubs and gun rings out at City Pond. We had previously talked about water being shipped, and I think somehow or another, maybe some of the lead was getting to the earth and then maybe transferred into the pond. And so it became somewhat of an issue of lead possibly getting into the water. And so there was, you know, that's my concern when it comes to outdoors, environmental, a part of possible lead getting into real water or groundwater.
Yeah, I'd like to address that. So, so we did consider that as well. So if the text amendment were to go forward, we were to go forward with purchasing the property, we would do a baseline sample, a soil sample, but the EPA also has an excellent program. It's a best practices program of stewardship for the environment, and we plan on certifying for that program. So that program provides the methodology and also the techniques for lead abatement and also taking care of the environment and being good stewards to the communities that we, where we have a range in.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Judy, do we know when the last time South River Gun Club actually requested an expansion?
Again, under the two thousand and two, and I can go back, I found South River Gun Club mentioned, I think, four or five times in the county's minutes that are actually scanned into Laserfish. But by that two thousand and two state law text amendment, they were not allowed to further expand. Now, they may have, may clean up their facilities like, you know, after so long, you may need to go in and do repairs or, you know, replacements, but they are, they are not, nor have they requested to expand the shooting range, to my knowledge, and I've been with the county since around two thousand and three.
Okay, so since two thousand and two, they have not requested to expand?
Not to my knowledge.
Do we know if it's normal for a gun range to expand once it's actually originated or once it's built originally or once it started?
I could not answer that either. I think they may have made statements about that, I think you made in your presentation, that South River couldn't expand. You know, I don't know if the expansion was there, could that be an opportunity to keep it to a single? I don't know that answer.
So this text amendment tonight doesn't state if they can or cannot expand?
Correct. And tonight, you would only be directing staff to either move ahead?
This is?
Whether or not you want to move ahead with looking into amending your text of your ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since South River, South River Gun Club has been in existence, has any other organization or entity come before the board to petition for a text amendment for an outdoor gun range?
Not to my knowledge. They have, we have not, and again, the only lawful gun club that I know of in Newton County is the South River Gun Club. Now, there may be some in the cities, but that's not in the unincorporated. We are only responsible for the unincorporated area.
Thank you. So Judy, okay, one second. So Judy, tonight is not approving the text amendment, it's just giving staff permission to make inquiries about the text amendment?
And if you directed staff this evening to look into a text amendment, then it would follow the zoning procedures law. We would craft a text amendment, we would place an ad in the newspaper, it would go before the planning commission. The planning commission would review the ordinance text to see whether or not they would recommend the board approve it or deny it. After their meeting, it would move on to the Board of Commissioners. And again, the Board of Commissioners would have the opportunity to approve the text amendment, amend, add, subtract, or deny the amend, add, subtract, or deny the text amendment. Um, so there is no final decision this evening, and there would be no final decision until that amendment was in front of you and you were making choices that evening.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cowan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to clear up what you mentioned, uh, Charlie Elliott has a long-range golf, uh, shooting range, uh, but it may be in Jasper County.
Correct.
It's right down the line, I'm not sure which one.
And I do believe there's a couple of them that may be under the state. Um, as in Charlie Elliott, we would not issue business license or regulate the government property.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to get clarity for myself. So if we do approve this, it's a possibility that South River Gun Club can come back and ask for an expansion as well? Is that what you stated?
I, I would believe based on the amount of land, that if our text would allow for 90 acres, um, they have more than that that they own surrounding that. So they, I, I don't know of any legal way that we could say, no, you can't do anymore, but we can add new ones.
Thank you. Guys, anything else?
Thank you, thank you, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we want to say thank you for your consideration and, uh, you know, we, we, if there are any questions based on the information that you have, you can always reach out to us and, uh, we can clarify as well.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, um, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Edwards.
This time, I'd like to make a motion that we turn down text amendment to the Newton County zoning ordinance to add language to allow for an outdoor gun shooting range. And I would like to, I would like to amend this just to, uh, to omit Representative Davis and omit specifically Bass Reeves Gun Club. I want this to, I would like this to read into the minutes as, um, where this specifically, this text amendment will specifically deny any gun club from coming to Newton County, anywhere in Newton County.
It's been motion, uh, do I have a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any more discussion? Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Just want to get clarity on Commissioner Edwards' amendment. So you're stating that with us, your, your, your motion is stating that if this is not approved, you're, you don't want this to happen with any other company that are gun range or what? Excuse me if I pronounce it wrong, that's not my area expertise, but can come in Newton County to be able to do this in any area of Newton County.
So, so the motion is stated on, on the floor is that not to allow any gun, um, ranges to come to Newton County? Yeah, in AR zoning, yeah. Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to legal. Can we, can we legally omit anybody else from, maybe put in for if they wanted to, uh, from this motion?
Can, 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 can?
I would specify legal. If you want to answer, slide.
So they can come indoor, but they can't come outdoor? So you want to clarify about that? Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I want to make two points. Uh, first to Commissioner Henderson's question. Um, we, we can legally, um, and forgive me if I'm not getting the question right. We can legally state now that, um, we are not in favor of any text amendments for, um, shooting ranges regardless of who the applicant is. Um, but that would not prevent us in the future from changing our mind. That's just the, the, the basis for the, the motion now. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. And then the, the second point I want to make is, um, just, I think everyone understands, but the, the implicit, uh, notion in, um, the motion is that this applies to outdoor shooting ranges and not indoor ranges.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Uh, just a discussion, um, I, I think it's kind of unfair to say any because there is a shooting range that's in the area. I can see maybe if they want to go to a different part of the county and maybe present this, but to say any, that's kind of a little, that's strenuous.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Any more discussion?
Just one second. So if we approve it, I'm going to amend it, that doesn't mean that it automatically goes into effect that, that a gun range will go everywhere in the county. That would mean that it comes back to us to see if we agree with the, uh, what was amended.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in, uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let me, let me just voice some more opinion. Our county has moved, uh, in a direction in terms of population. That, as, as I, I have ridden around this particular area, um, last couple of weekends, looking around, I'm very familiar with the area, grew up in the area. Um, and our county, uh, you know, District 1 is, is as rural as anywhere, or more rural than the other districts. And you, you can't get remote enough in Newton County, uh, in my opinion, to, to place a shooting facility. Our population has moved to that point, to where it would not be, it would be detrimental to the quality, the quality of life to those that live around. And, and a half a mile, no matter the buffer on these shooting ranges, uh, i- is just not enough. It, it, it's detrimental, uh, it, it plays with your psyche. I listen to it every weekend. So, um, I, I just, and, and keep in mind, this is the entire county. This is not about Bass Reeves Gun Club. This is about our entire, our entire county with a text amendment. So please keep that in mind. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? It's, it's a motion, it's a motion to deny, to deny this per, this text amendment. So if you are in favor of denying this text amendment, I'm calling for a vote now. It's just the same language. All in favor of denial? All opposed? Um, it passes, uh, 3-2? Well, that's 3-2, yeah. Is there no, another motion that you would like to put on the floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, the amendment so that it may be, so that it can come back to us to see if that's what we want, that's how we want it to be approved. Or what's the content of it? But you kind of hit me a little bit legal.
So do you want to state that as being said, uh, you want to prove staff to move forward, uh, seeking?
Absolutely, but I just want to come back to us so that we can review it and make sure that, that it's the way we want it.
So you want to make that motion for staff?
Well, I'm trying to make sure it be right, so I was asking legally, you kind of hit me a little bit.
Yes, so I'll just, I'll just state it. Uh, motion to approve initiation of a text amendment for outdoor gun shooting range and to direct staff to proceed accordingly.
Any more, more? Can I, it's been, uh, motion by Commissioner Henderson, can I get a second, please? Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner, um, Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and no disrespect to my other Commissioners, but y'all don't live in a, um, rural area like we do, um, where there is a lot of vacant land, uh, people have chosen to move out there for, for a particular reason. Um, even my daughter, like I said, she is located on 10 acres in Morgan County. She's still got a guy that uses and shoots right next door to her. It is loud, it's going to be loud, and I'm just telling you, I think you guys have made a mistake on this one.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to, maybe it's for legal, a complete understanding when we, we're doing this vote. When we first did the first one, it was based, the language that Commissioner Edwards stated was to amend what was already written. So that's what I am voting on, to amend that it cannot be placed on any area in the county. That's what his statement was, what his motion was. It was completely different from what is written.
That's a good question, so my understanding.
Just want to put that for the record.
My understanding of Commissioner Edwards' motion was that it was to deny the petition to initiate a text amendment and, uh, for the denial to apply to not only this particular applicant, but to any, um, future applicant for a similar text amendment.
That, that field motion on table is to approve the text amendment, but come back to us to see if, uh, we want to proceed. I think they brought a better word.
Correct. Uh, next on agenda is item?
Commissioner Henderson made a motion.
Who submitted a motion?
He made the motion, Demond.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's been motion by, um, Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner, um, Mason. All in favor? Discussion, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Judy, what is, what exactly does this mean? Can I address, can I address Judy, Mr. Chairman?
Judy, can you come up, please?
Thank you. So if I understand this correctly, uh, the, the board voted in favor to initiate a text amendment to the Newton County zoning ordinance to add language to allow for an outdoor shooting range or any outdoor shooting range?
It would be any, uh, it, it would not be singular. Um, it would open it up for outdoor shooting ranges, the same way we can have indoor shooting ranges by right now.
And in more, and in all likelihood allowing South River Gun Club to expand?
Again, I, I have not been able to think of a way that we could restrict their rights and allow new ones to be able to establish in the, uh, county.
Okay, thank you, Judy. So, so we've, we've, we've essentially, uh?
Yeah, Ms. Judy, can you stay up for one second, please?
We, we've approved a text amendment that, that has zero impact on we, us as Commissioners in terms of our quality of life. But there's a bunch of people out here that have voiced opinions tonight, and I know for a fact that this gunfire will disrupt lives, uh, enjoying, uh, cooking a steak on your grill at night or in the afternoon. Um, uh, but we don't, we don't seem to care. Um, it, again, this week, I'm, again, this week, I'm blown away.
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Sir, um, we, we don't make, we don't make, uh, outbursts in, in, during the meeting, so please refrain from making those outbursts. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So with that, I will apologize to my constituents. Um, I, I, apparently I did not do a good enough job of convincing my fellow Commissioners of your concerns. Um, so I, I, I don't know what to tell you other than, uh, my, my apologies, um, that, that you will have to listen to, um, nothing against this organization, Bass Reeves Gun Orga, Gun Club Organization. It, it's the fact of we're going to have automatic weapons fire, uh, within yards of, of homes. Uh, and within a half a mile of hundreds of homes. Uh, and I've, I've experienced that many times, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a, a statement that's for all of us on, well, I can speak only for myself. When we sit on this platform, we need to respect each other's opinion because the way that we respond and the way that we act on this platform is how our constituents are going to respond to us. So we may agree and we may disagree, but that's what we were put here and placed for. That's why they elected us to be here. So we need to make sure we respect each other's decisions that are made on here. My vote is based on what Commissioner Edwards stated, that no one in the county can have the right to do this particular thing. It wasn't based on just in that specific district. I want to make sure I put that out there because we have the news media in, in, in the audience, and they're going to take it and run with it. So my point was based on your motion stated that no one in the future references can come and do anything else in this county, not for what's happening right now or in specific districts that were, that you, at this, on, on the board we're talking about right now. It's based on what was stated. So that is strenuous to put that type of stipulation on any business that wants to come in this county and submit a petition to build a business in this county. That is completely wrong because we already have a gun range. So why is that stipulation not placed on that business? That's like if I bring a McDonald's in the area and you put a stipulation on, on one McDonald's, and then I come, I can't put it here because the stipulation has been placed on every business in the county. They can't do it. So we need to respect each other's opinion because we're placed here based on our voters.
Any, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. And I, I guess I'm asking once again, you know, that they said that if this amendment is approved, that, that the gun range automatically goes up and that the shooting starts. So by, if the board approved this text amendment, what does that mean? Does anything goes up? Does any building goes up, uh, have a gun room, have, have a gun range been approved?
As we look to the text amendment, again, as I stated earlier, I have not found a jurisdiction that, that does not require at least a special use or a conditional use permit. That would be my suggestion as we look at appropriate districts and whatever that language needs to be to help buffer our residential, uh, properties. Um, if it was a conditional use and the amendment moved forward and the board approved the amendment, the, any applicant would still have to go back and file for a conditional use permit, which would again be a public hearing, and then you would base your approval based on the criteria and if it fits the regulations for a, um, conditional use permit. So it would not, I would not suggest, now, the board could say, we want to amend the ordinance and we want it by right. That is, you're the legislative body. I, I will do what you ask, but as a planner and as being in the community and looking at the intensity of uses, I would recommend at a minimum it be through a conditional use permit. So if the text amendment moved forward, you would still get another blush at the property and the specifics and what their credentials were. But also, mind you, once the conditional use is, um, granted, or even if South River chose to sell, they're legal non-conforming, so another group could move in there and operate that facility as well. So I just want to make sure, there's a lot of, a lot of things, which is, you know, um, staff did not go into, I did not go into preparing a lot of long drafts for you guys to consider. That wasn't what tonight's meeting was about. It appears that there's a lot of information y'all still would like to see. So again, we're at the pleasure of the board.
Okay, so if the board approved this night, I'm going back to what I said, uh, do the gun range go up or do it come back before?
It, it would, it would be a, uh, not extremely lengthy, but staff would anticipate at least 90 days to get some type of text amendment before the board. And then again, should it, the amendment be approved, if it was a conditional use, then that could possibly be another 75. possibly be another seventy-five to ninety days for them to petition and come back before the board.
So y'all coming back to the board, once you come, get some information, if it's approved, to make sure it's what we think it should be or if we wanna consider it at all?
Yes, and you do have the right, just because staff works on an amendment. If it is the pleasure of this board to not adopt that amendment, you do not have to adopt that amendment.
So it's not as what was said at RANIS Board, say, well, they're gonna just go and let them build a gun range out here. They gotta come back before us and see if that indeed what we might wanna consider.
All the power rests with the board.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, but for them to have a conditional use permit, they gotta go to the expense of buying the property and getting all that set up, so they'll have to, they'll have to be the rightful owner before they can ask for a conditional use permit.
No, sir, you can actually get the approval of the property owner and be an applicant. You do not have to own the property to apply for zoning. You just have to secure the approval of the lawful owner that they know you are moving forward with some type of change of use on their property.
Okay, but they've already said that they had a contingent contract on the property, so obviously, I would, I'm pretty sure they're gonna move forward with purchasing the property. I would hate for them to purchase the property and then have, ask for a conditional use permit that gets denied down the road, but that's a possibility.
Everything, again, is based on the information as it comes before this board. So that is, yes, sir, that is a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cowan, I just wanna clarify that they probably wouldn't purchase the property until, at a subsequent meeting, we actually amended our zoning text, and that's even before the conditional use.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Legal, could you restate the motion since it's been so long?
Okay, the motion, which I believe was made by Commissioner Henderson, was to approve initiation of a text amendment to the Newton County zoning ordinance to add language to allow for an outdoor shooting gun range, gun shooting range, and to instruct staff to proceed accordingly.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, can we read the motion one more time? I'm sorry, my apologies.
The motion on the floor is a motion to approve initiation of a text amendment to the Newton County zoning ordinance to add language to allow for an outdoor gun shooting range and to instruct staff to proceed accordingly.
All in favor? All opposed?
I abstain my vote, and the reason being is that the language is not completely clear on this project, so at this time, I abstain my vote. The language is not completely clear on the motion. Let me correct that, on the motion, not the project, the motion.
Can we get some, can you explain so we can get some clarity for you? No, that's a question on the floor. Can, if you can explain what's unclear, I can make sure we get clarity for you. No, hold, hold, hold. You addressing the chairman, not Commissioner Henderson. I'm asking you a legal question.
No, I wasn't addressing Commissioner Henderson, that wasn't what was going on, but I was basing it on what both of the motions were. It was not clear to me based on the motion for Commissioner Edwards stating that if this is approved, that all businesses who actually submit this will not be able to do it in the future. And then we have the other motion on the floor that's, even Ms. Judy, Ms. Johnson came in and explained it, it's not fully clear to me, so that's why I'm abstaining my vote.
Sam, is there anything that you can do to clarify this?
So I understand, I think, why you think that the two motions were not kind of opposite from each other. So hypothetically, if there were to be a motion to reject the proposal to initiate a text amendment with no caveats or anything else, just to reject the current proposal, would you support that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, if I abstain my vote, that vote goes to the chairman.
That's right.
Am I correct?
That's right.
So I think I kinda explained the reason why, so I abstain my vote.
Okay.
I'll tell you what I do, I'll break it, Ty. So I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna abstain as well, so that motion would fail for the lack of support. So if we wanna play games like that, we can play them. So- Motion failed for lack of support. I'm gonna go to a recess, guys.
Damn, he's got long ride back to Southern Bay.
No, 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 we're gonna act for table, cause it failed for the lack of motion. Guys, thank you, we're back in our meeting. Guys, number ten failed for the lack of support. I seek a motion that is tabled. I don't think that'll be the right thing to do, table it until it come back before. It can be tabled to the next regular meeting or it can be tabled indefinitely. It can be tabled to our next regular meeting or it can be tabled indefinitely.
Which item was that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry?
Item number ten.
The one we just talked about?
The one that just failed for the lack of support.
So we're gonna need another motion to put it back on another agenda?
Our attorney recommended that we act that it be tabled to the next meeting or tabled indefinitely.
I'll make a motion that we table indefinitely, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a second, please? Any discussion? All in favor? That table, that table failed three-two. We're gonna move on to, on to the, well, to the regular meeting, regular agenda, item ten A, which is Public Works Requesting Approval to Provide Landscape, Provide Landscating and Maintenance, Lighting Maintenance, and Lighting Power for Proposed Roundabout on SR-142.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. This is an agreement that we would enter into with the Georgia Department of Transportation, pardon me, obligating us to maintain the roundabout that will be placed at the entrance to the new Eastside High School. This agreement is similar to the one that we have for the roundabout at Highway 278 and for, and 142, as well as for the roundabout at Highway 162 and 81, and for the roundabouts that are to be constructed at Highway 212 and 162, Highway 11 and 278, and Highway 278 and 142. There is not a figure on here because we don't, we only have a conceptual plan, but at this point, we are supporting this is done to support the roundabout, and also, and also indicates to GDOT that we will do the maintenance on it as well, or for the plants and all, as well as to pay for the lighting that will be installed. All of the lighting, all of the landscaping and all will be installed by GDOT as part of the project, but we do have to maintain that and maintain and pay for the lighting at the site.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I've had the opportunity, thanks to, to use some of those roundabouts, especially one in unincorporated Newton County, and I'm telling you, you know, I thought the standard was one similar to the one out there at Turner Lake or Clark Street. And when you go to some other, some are too small and you run all on, it's a big truck, they run all on the side of it, whichever way. So why can't we have some sort of standard, a real nice roundabout, rather than just putting anything out there?
Well, the, the, the roundabouts are designed by GDOT. One of the issues, now, the one at Turner Lake was done as a city project, but, and the one you're probably referring to as being small is the one that's at Highway 36 and 212, it is pretty small. There is, or are some plans to actually go back and retrofit that roundabout. That was one of the first ones they put in, and they wanted to work within the existing right-of-way, and so it did, it was pretty small. But one of the things, too, that we have encouraged GDOT to do when these come up is that they make it, any landscaping to be as simple as possible because we don't have, you know, we have tractors and bushhogs, and so our level of maintenance is gonna be the same level of maintenance that we typically have along our roadways. So that's why there's a little, we encourage them to put basically grass and a few trees in there as opposed to putting, to a highly, high-maintenance-type landscape, including flowers and all, like they've done at Turner Lake. That certainly looks nice, but that's, requires quite a bit of maintenance and there is quite a bit of cost involved in doing that, so, but, but that's the reason why there's different ones. It depends on the engineer who designs it, depends on who's in charge at that time. There's been several iterations in, from GDOT on, as they have- There's been several iterations in, from GDOT on, as they have, as they've progressed in their ideas about roundabouts, they've changed over the, over the last year since we originally put the first ones in, so.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner? I got one more. Commissioner Edwards, and then Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, it's new, Lord, it's news to me, there's gonna be another roundabout, right there. So, the two roundabouts?
The, the only way-
Come out of a roundabout, and go into a roundabout?
Yes, the only way that the GDOT determined that they could handle the traffic, and then all the turning movements, was to utilize a roundabout there. So, instead of signalizing it, they felt like a roundabout would be a better way to handle all of it.
I couldn't understand why they didn't make the 142 entrance exit at that, that, that New Eastside High School exit only. I don't, I don't know, but, so, so we typically, when we build a high school, or build a school in the county, we, the lighting we provide, the school system has not aided us in any way financially on, on those particular projects.
Well, the school system actually is gonna be contributing, working with GDOT on this roundabout, and on the turn lanes and all that are on 2, that there's a turn lane there on 278, and then there'll be turn lanes on 142. They're actually having to pay for that, we're not paying for that. They're working with GDOT, and GDOT, they asked for our consultation on the design, and that's, we were able to put in our thoughts on what we wanted in there, in terms, or what should go there in terms of landscaping. But, all of the light, all of those things are all part of that project, but, so I don't know exactly what the school is contributing, the dollar amount that they're contributing to it, but they are required to do those improvements where, at least where their property is, and where they're making the greatest impact.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
I want to thank you so much, Mr. Kerr, for explaining that, because we kinda had a conversation, and I kinda knew that other commissioners would have questions, and as well as the citizens. So, when were we able to find out the cost of this project?
There, the, we were given the plans for review and comment just this past week, so, our transportation engineer was gonna meet with the school and facilities engineer to discuss, and then we'll turn in all our comments to GDOT, and then they'll get back with us, and we'll work together for them. Soon as they get the plan, I guess the short answer, instead of going around the world here, as soon as we get the finalized plans, then we'll know what that obligation's gonna be. It's relatively minimal, actually, based on the other things that we've had to do. The, the lighting and all is, and the landscape maintenance on it is pretty, pretty minimal.
Anyone else? I seek a motion, please.
I move to approve, I know it's 10A, item 10, Public Works requesting approval to provide landscape maintenance and lighting, and lighting power for proposed roundabout on SR 142 at Eastside High School entrance.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders, and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor? Pass it 5-0, thank you. Next is, um, T and B, appointment to the JDA, Marcelo Baines, Chairman of Newton County BOC. Mr. Kerr?
This is the, the annual appointment for the JDA. There's two members that can be appointed, and I think the first one here is to reappoint Chairman Baines as our elected official representative on the JDA.
Thank you, sir. Any, Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, just want to clarify for the records. The reason why that I asked for this to be removed from the consent agenda, because we did not follow the guidelines for this appointment, has nothing to do with the person, or individuals that we are appointing, is that we did not follow the guidelines. And you will learn from me, for those who learn from me, I read everything, okay? So, the Board of Commissioners as a whole selects two members, so it has not been presented to the board completely at all, unless I'm the only one that get the documentation. One member of the JDA board must be a member of the Board of Commissioners. Members serve a four-years' term, unless the member sooner cease to serve on the Board of Commissioners. So, any commissioner, if you decide, if you want to, you can serve on this board. Anybody on the Board of Commissioners can serve, but it has to go based on this document that was written, approved, adopted, March 2nd, 1999. It has to go before the board as a whole.
Anyone else? I seek a motion, please. Commissioner, Commissioner Sanders?
I seek a motion that we table the appointment for JDA until we go through the process that's as written.
Hold on a second. So, I don't have a preference as to whether you table this or not, but historically, the process of placing appointments on the consent agenda has been considered sufficient to place it before the Board of Commissioners. You obviously are within your rights to take it off the consent agenda and discuss it further, but if you were to discuss it and then vote, I would consider that to be going fully through the process that's contemplated.
The reason why I'm thinking-
So, guys, hey, hey, so, cornerboarder, so let's make sure we wait to be recognized, and-
My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
And come back to the chairman, and I come back to you. Commissioner Sanders?
Well, I think that we need to table it, so that it goes before the board, because some board members may have appointments of their choice, or someone here in Newton County that they would like, well, we're not on the other option yet, but, a board member might want to appoint themselves, so, we just want to make sure we follow in policy. That's what we're here for, to make sure it goes before the board. So, doing it on the fly would kinda be like we just coming up with names to place on this appointment.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. If my memory serves me right, the, the consent agenda was placed to put, come, it's like housekeeping measures, in other words, you know, you would, there was stuff behind it that you just wanted to put on, be through it, rather than go to them individually. But I also remember that it said that any item on there, that any commissioner could request that item be talked about, or, or moved down to be talked about during the course of the meeting. And so, I think that's probably the right thing to do. And so, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was gonna ask, when looking at these two appointments, because it looks like it's a second appointment, as well, so looking at these two appointments, were these appointments something that was already in place before, and we're just renewing it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yes, they were.
Okay, so was it a specific reason why these particular two were-
Those were-
Put be on the board previously, should I say?
Yeah, they were, they, we were serving on the board, on the JDA board. We've been serving on the JDA board for about four years.
Okay. So, these individuals were actually selected previously to be put on this board by a pre, by a previous board?
Last year. They, we renew it every year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry?
And I think that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, well, customary that the chairman has served, or he's appointed, yeah. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. If my memory serves me correctly, I made the motion four years ago to put you and Jerry Silvio on this, on the JDA board, and it's turned out to be a windfall for Newton County, absolutely. As we, as we discussed earlier, Stanton Springs was only entertaining biopharmaceutical companies. Had they maintained that mindset, had we not sent Jerry Silvio and the chairman down there to change that mindset, Facebook would not be there today. That's a simple fact. So, they have championed Newton County very well. I just wanted to have, I wanted to put that input, and give some context to Commissioner Mason, what he was just asking, so, thank you for your time, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Who first? Commissioner Sanders?
I just want to reiterate, it's not based on who we are appointing, it was the process was not done correctly. That is what is put before us. As Commissioner Mason said, the, the last appointees, appointments were from the previous board four years ago, it's supposed to do this every four years. So, that's what this is all about, we did not go through process. We're put in place to follow the law. That's what we're put in place for.
Commissioner Henderson?
Now, thank you. Well, first of all, I think this is apartment, not, it's, it's a board apartment, or apartments, if I'm not, if I'm not correct, it's not a, or it's not determined apartment, not, one commission apartment, it's a board apartment, if we really want to serve every four years in this capacity. I also just want to say about Stanton Springs and pharmaceutical company, had it not been for a deceased chairman, and you said, well, how'd I know? Because I was here at that time, Davis Morgan, who sold the commissions on the idea of, of what our counties coming together to form a industrial park that really was, that stuck out in the, in the state of Georgia. In fact, the governor came down and took it from us, he stood up there, and he gave away his stuff, plaques and all that stuff, in fact, I think three or four governors, two or three, came down, because it was jewel in Georgia, and still is. So, I, I think it's a combination of not just one group of people, but several groups of people in Newton County, especially Newton County, where the one started, we had a dream that didn't come together, a year, it took years for it to come together, and the first major was the pharmaceutical company, and that was, someone started it all. And so, I just, just, just want to conclude by this, if we need to start doing stuff, in my opinion, what is, what is in order?
Commissioner Sanders?
And I just want to mention, on September 1st, 2020, if anyone would like to go view the video at the 1 hour and 37 minutes, that second, the question was posed to our county attorney, would, do the chairman have to sit on our boards? Can any of the Board of Commissioners sit on that board? And our county attorney, Attorney Sam, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, stated legally, no.
Anyone else? So I can get a clear understanding of, can, can you restate your motion, please?
My motion was actually to table this until we come together as a board to select the appointee as stated in the appointment process. The Board of Commissioners as a whole selects two members to serve on the JDA board. One member of the JDA board must be a member of the Board of Commissioners. Members serve a four-year term, unless the member sooner cease to serve on the Board of Commissioners. So, the process is supposed to be done every year with the board. It's all about following guidelines.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders, and second by Commissioner Henderson, is that correct? That we table this, is that indefinitely, or to our next board meeting?
For 30 days.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. I want to go on record and say that I want veto that, for that to stay the same. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I can veto that, I can veto anything. Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
In the Enabling Act, yes, the commissioner can veto, but there is also a process. He has to do it, submit to Ms. Jackie, and it has to come back before the board in order for that veto to be approved. And it's in the Enabling Act, which is on our county documents.
Go ahead, Sam.
That, that is a correct recitation of the Enabling Act. I believe what the chairman was saying was, he intends to veto it in writing as stated in the act.
Next on agenda is item 10C, Public Works. Did I miss one? No, 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 I missed one, I'm sorry. Jerry Silvio, 10E, 10E, 10C, 10C, appointment Jerry Silvio to the JDA. Sam, you want to take that? Yeah, well, okay, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Sanders?
It's basically the same process, I wouldn't want to put the citizens through that again, it's the exact same process. It's supposed to go before the Board of Commissioners to appoint, to make that appointment, and I, the motion is to table it for 30 days.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Send a notice, the chairman intends to veto that as well. Next is, um, 10, 10D, appointment to the Solid Waste Authority, Chairman Baines. I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Like the motion that we appoint to the Solid Waste Authority, Mr. Chairman Baines.
Can I get a second, please? It been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
It's basically the same process, Mr. Chairman. And the document states that the Board of Commissioners, the Solid Waste Authority, they, they actually admit, they appoint eight individuals, three of which are Newton County-elected officials. It doesn't even have to be a member on the Board of Commissioners, as long as they are Newton County-elected official, and supposed to go before the board, who are Newton County residents, and other ones are Newton County residents, five of which are not Newton County residents, who do not hold any elected county office. All I'm stating is, we have to follow prop, we have to follow the order, we have to follow the order. So, my, that was my discussion.
Anyone else? Commissioner Cowan?
Just to correct on that, and Sam, you may, but it seems to me I read the Georgia Code on that, it has to be three commission members, not just three elected officials. It has to be three commission members. I'm not sure what you're reading from-
No, to, I'm sorry.
I know, but, it's, I read the code section on that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the codes, the code does technically say three elected officials of the county. Historically, that has always been the commissioners.
I thought it said three members of the commission.
That may be in the bylaws, but I would say that the statute, in this case, would control.
Thank you, any more discussion? All in favor? No, Stan got a motion on the floor. All in favor? He got a, Stan has a motion on a, to appoint Chairman Baines to the Solid Waste Authority. Yeah. Stan has a motion on the floor, you second a motion to appoint Chairman Baines to the Solid Waste Authority. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It passed 3-2. No, it passed.
I have a question. The question is, is do District Four have somebody on the Solid Waste- The question is, is do District Four have somebody on the Solid Waste Authority?
No. Sam?
Yeah, somebody else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in the past, since the authority was reconstituted about five years ago, appointments have not been made on a district basis, it's just been the consensus of the board, so the District Four Commissioner does not currently sit on the authority, but I wouldn't say that District Four doesn't happen appointee to the.
So, if, if, if I could, how could I ask that Mr. Junior Hilliard be placed on that particular board in representation of District Four? Junior Hilliard.
Oh, Junior Hilliard.
Yes, sir.
So, you'll find out, get back to him? I don't know, he asked him, how did, can he get somebody placed on there? Is it, is it a district appointment, I guess that's what this question is?
And if we could, can we put it on a consensus agenda, or we can formally discuss it, ask a vote of sort?
Well, so, the positions on the authority come up from time to time, the, if I understood the recent vote, you have just voted in favor of reappointing Chairman Baines, so at the next opportunity, you can, I guess, either request that an agenda item be made to appoint Junior Hilliard, or you can, if it's on the consent agenda, you may, as Commissioner Sanders has done, remove it and then have some discussion, substitute your nominee.
So, could I make this request, Sam, because, you know, it's times you make a question that doesn't kind of get on the agenda, so the question I'm making is that, it, the next meeting or whenever, we would like to have Junior Hilliard placed on to be, on the Solid Waste Authority.
Thank you. Next is Fire Services, Mr. Kerr, that's 10E, 9G.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, the, this is for a grant from the Gary Sinise Foundation, we are, have been in need of some additional extrication tools, and the, the tools are quite expensive, and so this particular piece of equipment's fourteen thousand, a little over fourteen thousand dollars. This is a grant that we applied for and we've received, and there is no match required for this grant, so we'll receive the fourteen thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars to be, that will enable us to purchase that piece of equipment without any match whatsoever.
Thank you, sir. Can I seek a motion, please?
I'm sorry, we're going to apply for that grant, I apologize.
They just asked him to apply. I seek a motion that we, well, Commissioner Edwards, yeah, already got his hand, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to approve the application for, for Gary Sinise Foundation grant to purchase vehicle extradition tool for fourteen, not to exceed fourteen thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars, that need equipment with no match required. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? All in favor? It passed five-zero, thank you. Next is Fire Services again, Commissioner, I mean, I'm, Mr. Kerr, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another grant that we would like to apply for, from CSX, and this is also again for an extrication, another extrication tool, and there is no match with this grant either, and this is again for the same type tool for fourteen thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars.
Thank you, sir. Seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, it passes five to zero. Next is, I think, Fire Services again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a FEMA grant that we're, would like to apply for, the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant. As I mentioned earlier this evening, we've installed recently, we installed four hundred and seventy of these smoke alarms that were purchased with this particular grant here, there is a five percent match, which would equal, it was eleven thousand, five hundred dollar grant, our match would be five hundred seventy-five dollars, and so we do have a fund that would be, that would fund, where we would have the available funds, that five hundred seventy-five dollars, so.
Thank you, sir, I seek a motion, please.
So moved, as stated by county manager.
Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you much. Next is Fire Services again, Mr. Kerr.
Again, this is a grant that we would like to apply for, this is a grant that is funded by the taxes, sales tax that is collected, or taxes rather, that are collected off of fireworks sales, and this is to purchase another piece of extraction equipment, or, excuse me, extrication equipment. This would have a ten percent match of fifteen hundred dollars, which would be, mean that the equipment then would be a total of fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir, I seek a motion, guys. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number eleven, Water Resources Change Order, I think James Brown is here with us tonight. Change order one, you're going to do, you got it, okay.
Yeah, James, maybe if you could come up, that would be good. This is, this is actually a change order to the sludge pond project that we have going on at this time, and, but I'll let James explain that a little to you, he's got all the details, thank you.
The request is to have Biogenomics to come in and clean the sludge ponds that we currently have in place remaining, to clean them out while they're online. Typically, what we do in the process of a year is take those ponds offline, let them dry naturally, and then we excavate the, the remaining material out and take it to the appropriate landfill. With the previous two, the smaller ones taken offline for, during the construction phase, we're unable to do that process, so having Biogenomics come in and clean them while they're online is the option of choice.
Thank you. Any questions, guys? Commissioner Edwards.
I may have missed it, do we have a cost on that?
There is, it's two hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars.
And what's that funding source?
That would be coming out of the Water Resources Fund, or is that part of that chief along?
It's part of the chief.
Chief along, I'm sorry.
All right, okay, thank you. So, so the sludge, this is a little off topic, so the slut, is it, is that, I assume it's biodegradable sludge, right?
It's the remnants from the, the treatment process, just removing silts and other, other material from the water supply.
Would any, would farmers ever use for that material?
No, unfortunately, besides the pH content, it doesn't have any nutrients that the farmers use for land application, it's just, the only thing they can use it for is the pH, and they, it's just too expensive for them to use it that way.
Okay, thank you, James.
Thank you. I seek a motion, guys. Thank you, Commissioner Henderson made the motion, Commissioner Mason seconded the motion. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Next, Attorney Sam, consideration approval of intergovernmental contract with Newton County Industrial Development Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will note at the outset that this item twelve goes hand in hand with the following item thirteen, and I also see that Sarah Hall is in the audience, and I don't know if she wants to present on this at all, I guess I'll, I'll start by summarizing the agreement. And I also want to mention, commissioners, that I passed out at the beginning of this meeting two loose leaf contracts that are slight updates to the version that is in your book, so the one that you are considering right now is item twelve, is the one that has at the bottom left-hand corner a little six-six-four-four-nine-seven thing, intergovernmental contract. This is the basic document as part of the issuance of bonds by the Industrial Development Authority that provides for the county to back those bonds, without the county standing as the payment source for those bonds, I'm not sure the authority would be able to issue bonds, or if they did, they certainly wouldn't get a, a very good credit rating or percentage interest rate on those. And a lot of what's in this, excuse me, a lot of what's in this agreement is sort of the, the bond terms, but the key provisions are in Article Five, which provide that the county will make the debt service payments of principal and interest on the bonds that will be used to fund the Stanton Grove Project, which as you, most of you anyway will remember from last time, is the purchase of a large acreage sort of across from Stanton Springs, I think, to market to the right development partner.
And county ownership, we'll have ownership.
Oh, well, okay, and.
Yeah, I think that's what the commissioner's wanting to know.
And so, it's, to, to transition really quickly to item thirteen, this will be paired with a separate agreement, which has been approved earlier today and yesterday by the Water and Sewer Authority and the Industrial Development Authority, that I will talk about in just a second, but if, if the Industrial Development Authority fails to be the first payer on these bonds, then the county and the Water and Sewer Authority will take title to that land.
Commissioners, I seek a motion for number twelve. Number twelve. Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards.
Is it appropriate to ask a question now or after the second, Mr.?
After the second, after we get it on the floor.
Make a motion to approve, the approval of intergovernmental agreement with Newton County Industrial Development Authority relating to issuance of Stanton Grove bonds.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so with item number twelve, I want to make sure I understand this properly, we're approving a partnership but not the bonds at this moment, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so actually, this would, we're not, technically, we're not approving the bonds because we're not issuing them, it's the authority that's issuing them, but this would sort of irrevocably set in motion the issuance of the bonds, so yes, you are approving the bonds with this. Backing the bonds, yeah.
All right, we, I have another comment, is that okay, Mr. Chairman? Okay, so, I don't know how long ago it was, maybe a couple of months, that this, this particular project, on behalf of the IDA, Newton County Industrial Development Authority, came before us, and it was not, I don't, I know it was in executive session, I'm not sure what I can say, but I have, I had some serious reservations at that time, and I named those off, there were, there were three, maybe four concerns I have, I had at that time, and without naming what those concerns are because we, without saying too much, those, those concerns have been alleviated, those concerns are now gone for me, I want, I want the constituents in District One to underst, and the county really, to understand that the reservations I had at that time are now one hundred percent gone. I had some real concerns that were voiced at that time, but I'm, I'm comfortable with this now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, one of the things that was asked was, especially in bond hearings, it was, if they didn't pay, we had to pay, I'm on the right, that's right, am I right? Am I right, Lord? If they didn't pay, then we had to pay the, the taxpayers of Newton County.
I'm sorry, that is correct, but the, but the IGA has been amended so that it, if the IDA, for some reason cannot pay the debt, then it falls to both the county and the Water and Sewer Authority to assume that debt.
Okay, so, so we wouldn't assume that all had go to the.
In the, the earlier agreement, just was with the, with the county, but the Water and Sewer Authority is also backing this.
Okay, so, if it didn't pay, the Water Sew, the Water and Sewer Authority in the BOC.
Yes, that's correct.
Would have to pay, and we, we talking back, how many, how many, how much is borrowing here, how much to cash the value?
The principal amount is sixteen million, or sixteen million, one hundred thousand, with interest and, and fees, it's something like nineteen and a half million.
Okay, so, with about eight million dollars, let's say nineteen, let's say nine million, eighteen million, we would be responsible for nine million, no, just a scenario, then with our taxes, if we were, if we were responsible for half of that, would our taxes go up? Because typically, when we talk about bonds, we talk about the taxpayer assuming it, and then it boils over into the millage rate, it goes up, I think fourteen, fourteen million, I think it's like forty-five million in ten years, so, so would that affect, at the worst scenario, would that affect our millage and the raise, and the raise we had to pay?
It is possible that it could, but it would depend greatly on if there were a default, when that default might occur. The first six years of, as I understand our agreement, the first six years would be paid, the, the IDA can guarantee payment on those first six years. Then beyond that, they would use land sales, sale of the land there at Stanton Grove in order to fund, and there's another mechanism that, to fund the repayment, pardon me, the repayment of that debt. But if they were to default at some point, it would depend on how much, what the balance was, and how long we would have to carry the debt, so it could have an impact, it, it may not have an impact, but it'd be difficult to say, you know, without having a little bit more knowledge of really knowing, we could speculate, but it really depends on when or if that, if that were to happen. The way that we have this structured now and set up, I, I believe it's highly unlikely that would happen, but it, it, it is, it's, it's possible, but whatever the balance is would be shared between us and the Water and Sewer Authority, and they would assume half of whatever that debt would be. So, that lessens our exposure significantly.
Well, absolutely, and I just got one last comment, I mean, when it comes to the Water and Sewer Authority, the citizens of Newton County are back a splash, gave them, and gave them money to set up their operation and, and to help do what it is that they may need to do for the Water and Sewer Authority, and yet, now that they're doing good and got millions of dollars in the bank, we don't, the taxpayers here, we don't see a dime go back to help us on, on our taxes, and I think that's, that's really not good. And so, what I'm seeing, I think, and I'm trying to just figure out the payment, the last six years of payment, six years of payment from the JDA, I think that's come from, come from real fees or, or fees that none, that. from real fees or fees that, that would be collected, additional money would be collected and given to the general fund to help our taxpayers and this money instead of, and you helped me correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, any money that we would have collected, would have, from anything at the, anything at Stanton Springs, would have gone into the general fund, or whatever our share of that, and it would have gone into the general fund. We would be able then, you know, it does, the addition of whatever those funds are does help to keep our, our millage rate from going any higher. As a matter of fact, last year, we were able to do somewhat of a rollback, so, so those funds did help contribute to that ability to do that.
So, in this payoff for this property, the money paying, we would not receive those funds? This, this would be for, would go towards the payment? If I'm not mistaken, I mean, I'm asking, because from the meetings that we had, it would add it up.
If, if we had to pay for the property, we would receive, if they defaulted on the loan and we began to have, then we would receive title to the property.
Absolutely. So, the money they're generating, that may go to us in '21, they would have returned, used that money, saved that money, made that six-year payment, or helped make the six-year payment. I guess that's what I'm asking.
I'm going to get Sarah to come up and, can you come up and help explain the, the financial ratio here, please?
Huh? I don't know if I can help. Boy, do, were you going to answer, Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry. What was the last part of the question, Commissioner? I'm sorry.
Sorry. You, I think you were saying that for six years of the payment, once we backed the bonds...
Right.
That the JDA, y'all would pay the payment. And what the question I asked was, that the monies, or some of the monies that y'all normally would give back to the county to go down on our millage rate or taxes or whatever, would go towards helping pay that payment.
Okay.
Can I understand what I'm saying?
You got it.
Yes, sir, I see what you're saying. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the time and the consideration of these two items. Commissioner Henderson, this is for the Industrial Development Authority, and currently, the money that we have earmarked to pay back the debt service for up to six years are not taxpayer dollars. They came off previous land sales, bond fees, and they came off of sploshed. In the 2017 splosh, there was a million dollars that was earmarked for economic development projects such as this today. So, the dollars that I believe you were speaking of, we're talking from the Joint Development Authority of Stanton Springs, those dollars, at this time, are not earmarked to pay back this debt. That is something completely separate. I think what, what had been presented earlier is that because our two entities at Facebook and Takeda are starting to pay taxes, is that they will generate revenue, that if there was ever a chance, that that could be a source from the county, if there was ever an opportunity, a chance that you would have to pay debt service. That is not a guarantee, we're not asking for you to, to go ahead and mark those dollars previously, or already for the future whatsoever. I hope that, does that help answer? Okay.
And so, in conclusion, the land, the land sales and money came, they were from previous property, a property that the county had purchased.
I was not here on a lot of previous land sales for the Development Authority.
Where's the property?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you on certain pieces of property. I mean, Mr. Turner's here and Chairman Sims are here.
All the, all the, the question that I asked, you were saying that money came from land sales, and I guess it had to be either county property that, that it is, and said that, and you, you encourage us to save some money to be able to pay off a possible debt on the bonds in the future.
Yes, sir. It could have been Development Authority land, and again, bond fees and details.
I believe, and I may be wrong, I think it, I think it all come from the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I can recall correctly, and I guess Sarah or Lloyd can correct me, but I think I read, when I read the intergovernmental contract, there is a repayment clause, correct? So, for example, if the IDA defaults, there is a particular period of time where the IDA can actually repay those monies back to Newton County Water and the IDA. Is that correct? Is there a repayment clause that I recall?
Yeah.
Clause, I am believing.
Yeah.
Thank you. And so, now, this is why I kind of say those, these two items are kind of, should be considered together. This, that's in the other contract, the next item, but, but you're absolutely right. The, the authority, as long as the authority has money over $100,000, it has to use any excess to pay this. And then, if the authority is, like owes the county and the Water and Sewer Authority more than half a million dollars at any point, then on the first of the year following that point, we can sort of call the debt and take title to the property.
All right, that was my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Sarah. So, and this may be directed more toward legal, but I want to, let me first set some context for, for everybody, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is, is, is this property, the, the IDA has the ability, if, if there were no projects lined up for this property, it, it just sat for, it sat for six years, the IDA has the money to pay that note on those bonds for six straight years?
Yes.
Before we ever get involved?
That's correct.
Or the Water and Sewer Authority ever get involved?
Yes, based on the new term documents and our budgeted on, on fees and interest, and again, I will say that since you saw it last time, one point of reference is that our term on our interest rate went sub 2%, we're now at 1.99%, which is fantastic, so we're very excited about that rate, is that, yes, now we can make it to year six at that point. That is correct, and that is with no land sales, anything else, but that is not, you know, the goal. We, we look to try to develop the property.
Well, you know, as, as I stated earlier, I had, I had my reservations, but I have every confidence in the world that you guys will have a project down there in no time. For, for legal, what I would like to say is I, is for the ID, in terms of the IDA and the money that they would use to pay back this debt, were no project were to come to Stanton Grove, how do we, and I trust every one of them, so how do we encumber that money and assure it's there in six years if we need it, if they need it? Or for the period of six years, how do we encumber that money? Can we contractually encumber that money to make sure it's there that they can pay it? Chairman Sims, don't run off and buy another car or something.
So, the, the current versions of the, of the IGAs that have been approved, and really should be approved tonight, if possible, to keep the bond on track, do not have them take that money and put it in a lockbox or anything. But I guess the, if they were to spend that money on something else and not be able to make their payments, then we, as I just mentioned, we could kind of foreclose and take the property, so there's that hanging over their head if they don't make the payments.
Sam, if I can, Commissioner Edwards, we currently, at the last board meeting of the Development Authority, have approved Frank, our legal, as well as our administrative assistant at the Development Authority, to review areas, whether it's a money market or a CD, or an annuity, of where we are going to begin placing, set aside, that you will be able to see, that we do have funds set up for debt service payment specifically for this project, that will be separate from the other accounts that is earmarked for this. Right now, we just have those monies dedicated, just again, in bond fee areas and things like that, but this will be a dedicated debt service payment that will be very clear that you will be able to see if we move forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to be brief. The first time we looked at this, I had a lot of concerns, just like Stan did. I think he's eliminated those concerns. This is a good deal for the county. I think we should move forward with it.
Thank you, sir. Is that a form of a motion? You making that a form of a motion?
Yeah.
I'm, well, it's all right.
I thought we already had a motion.
I have a motion on the floor. Well, we're getting this discussion so long, good gracious. Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
Could someone repeat motion?
It was motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, that we approve this. So, if there are no more discussion, I'm calling for a vote, all in favor. It passes five to zero, thank you. Sam, number 13.
Thank you, Chairman. So, the next item is closely related, it's the IGA that secures the, the 50% co-payments by the Water and Sewer Authority. If the IDA were to fail, it also secures the, the promise by the IDA to pay the bonds as long as they have funds to do so. And finally, it secures the right of the county and the Water and Sewer Authority to foreclose if the IDA gets too far behind. So, we've already discussed that, I won't go further unless you have questions.
Thank you. Guys, I seek, I seek a motion. Motion by Commissioner Mason, can I get a second? It's been second by Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Sanders.
I just have a question for legal in Section 5.04B, under county responsibility and obligation, it's stated that the county is responsible for all damages and/or if it's any destruction, is that normal for, in a contract, for the county to be responsible for going into a partnership?
Sorry, could you repeat the section, please?
Section, and I hope I wrote it down correctly after reading it, Section 5.04B. County responsibility and obligation.
Okay, so, just to clarify, we are now back on the one, the contract we just approved, not the one that we're considering now?
Right.
Okay.
Maybe, I'm just asking, it probably just summed it up, is it normal for the county to be responsible for damages and, and destruction? Is that just...
So, so as I, as I read this, it doesn't say that the county is responsible for damage, it says that even if the property is damaged, the county will continue to pay the bond, and that is very normal.
Okay. That was, I'm done.
So, is there any discussion on Item 13? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Recreation, Item 14, Recreation Department, financial request and approval of, of grid line concrete skate, skate park design, Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to ask our Recreation, Parks and Recreation Director, Dwayne Mask, and our project manager, Jeff Prine, to come up to talk about Item 14 and then 15 as well.
Basically, late last year, we met with Commissioner Mason and had a good discussion about some projects to be had out at the Denny Dobbs Park, skate park was one of those. We offered a suggestion that we would put out an RFP for a design-build team that would come in and work with us, and him and his constituents, to put together a design and then construct it. So, that RFP was issued, we had two submissions that came in. Ground Line was reviewed by the Evaluation Committee, which was made up of myself and members of the Parks and Rec Department, and Ground Line is who we are recommending to you tonight. Ground Line has been recognized as probably one of the top design-build skate park designers in the world, so it's a pretty amazing opportunity to have them come join us and be a part of our team. But we're, Dwayne, you want to say anything?
Like Jeff said, we've looked over all these, and we were all, all under the same agreement to proceed, hopefully with this company to come on board and start this process
The last thing, I just want to be clear, the services that they are providing will be to design a, a complete master plan, and then a Phase 1 that will stay within our initial project budget, which is what their contract total is that you see for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve, requesting the approval of grid line concrete skate park design and construction contract in the amount of $1,809,875 for the location of the skate park at Denny Dobbs Park.
Thanks, sir. Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. So, this money will be, where do we come from? Splosh, splosh fund, right?
Just that's right.
Okay. Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Is it possible to go ahead and get them to do a design for the Spring Hill Park project? It's also a splosh project. Could they go ahead and look at that?
I'm not aware what that project is.
For the building, I thought they were at a, wanting a community center, has that changed?
I don't know. I've heard both. I think the intent was a park, and I think we ought to go that direction to start with, just the design on that. We haven't found a location suitable for that yet, but folks are still looking out there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this company does only skate parks, is that right, Jeff?
That, that is correct. The next item might be where, where we could help you, because the next item is bringing on a design-build team to do various park-related projects throughout the county.
Okay. Thank you.
But this one is specifically a skate park design company.
Gotcha.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Jeff?
Yes, sir. So, this next one is also, like I said earlier, a, we're bringing for you tonight, a, an RFP that was put out for looking for design-build companies that would work with the Parks and Rec Department to do various renovation and new construction projects throughout the county for each of the districts as they were funded. And we had two submissions, Barnsley Construction Group, who are working with us out at the Law Enforcement Center, were evaluated and chosen to be the recommended firm for you tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
So, this group will, will work on the Spring Hill project, we can add that to that?
We can task them with doing that, yes, sir.
Okay.
They, you know, we probably need to have some discussion about the plan, you know, do we want to do a master plan, or do we want to just, or we need to have some decisions made, whether it's a park, whether it's a community building, or that sort of thing to nail down before we would task them with anything, but the short answer is, yeah, they can do that, we just need to figure out what the scope is.
I'm not sure the citizens out there know exactly what they want, I just know what they were promised. They were promised a park, I think they decided they would like to see a community center out there. But I think when they were promised a park, I think that's where we should start at that. And again, hopefully, we will be able to identify a suitable location in the next six months, or three months, I suppose, so that they get, so they can get something working on that. I think there's, there's splosh money set aside for that particular project.
There was, yes, sir, that 495 was what was set aside for the Spring Hill.
Yeah, and I think, do we have any additional splosh money available?
At this point, all of the additional funding is going, the board made the decision several months back... Uh, at this point, all of the additional funding is going, the board made the decision several months back to put the, any additional funding towards the nine one one project.
I got you.
Because we needed to have those funds, that was.
I understand.
Underfunded.
But maybe we can go ahead and at least identify something and get a site plan, put it in place, uh, and then start looking, looking for land and things like that, what we need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you guys for being here tonight. Our county manager, uh, discussion consideration of FFA tower lease with Georgia Association, um, Mr. Currie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this agreement between the FFA and, and the county is part of our nine one one project. Uh, we, uh, are building three towers that will actually belong to the county, one of them will be located on the FFA site. FFA has agreed to allow us, uh, to build a tower there and we would be leasing, uh, ground space from them. And they have agreed to allow us, uh, to, uh, lease that ground space from them for zero dollars. Um, but we would agree that if there were to be any other, uh, locates, co-locates on that tower, um, that we would split whatever revenue that would come from the co-locates with them fifty fifty. And, um, I believe that's a good arrangement for us, that could be profitable, uh, or lucrative for us, it also could be lucrative for FFA. At this point, we don't have any other companies who have approached us about co-locating on that tower, but we anticipate that there probably would be.
Thank you, I seek a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve FFA tower lease with Georgia Association, the Future Farmers of America.
Can I get a second, please? Sir? It's been motion by Commissioner, uh, Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, uh, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lloyd, I believe Paladin Wallace is counting on being able to jump on that.
Okay, good.
On that, uh, tower. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
That will allow the Sheriff's Department to hook up and maybe serve some of those areas where we don't have service there.
And primarily, it's gonna give us radio service inside of the FFA site. That's a pretty large site and that's one of the spots where we had a lot of problem with two-way radio communication.
I know Jackson Lake is one area that's.
Yeah, and, and with the number of kids that are down there, it was, it's, uh, it's extremely important that we obviously have good communications inside and outside of those buildings. Um, and so that'll, that fills in a big gap that we had down there. And yeah, that's, that was part of the upgrade.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Next, Attorney Sam, ordinance amendment O dash O two zero two two one.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, this is a, a very simple ordinance. Basically, you may be familiar with the fact that the county recently codified all of its ordinances in municipal code. When that happened, um, the codification of the, uh, public health ordinances left out some important references to state regulations and local Department of Public Health regulations. The ordinance simply adds in those references again, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance amendment zero dash zero two zero two two one, uh, regarding, um, Georgia Department of Public Health and Newton County Board of Health Regulations.
I get a second, please? You, oh, thank you, sir. Uh, this is motion by Commissioner, um, Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Next, Attorney Sam, again, discussion, consideration of resolution R zero two zero two two one.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, and I guess we wanna call this Resolution two two one A, um, just to distinguish it from the previous, oh, nevermind, that's a resolution, sorry, ignore that. So this resolution, uh, is intended to streamline the process of acquisition of, uh, right-of-way. Typically, when we build a road or widen a road, we need to get little slices of land from the landowners on all sides. And the policy, uh, that would be adopted by you provides that any acquisition, uh, over twenty-five thousand dollars must be considered by the board. But as to those under twenty-five thousand, um, if the owner accepts the appraised value that we have come up with, uh, Lloyd can sign and they can be approved at the next consent agenda. However, if the owner, uh, offers, uh, the greater of fifteen percent or fifteen hundred dollars above appraised value, Lloyd can still sign as long as he, uh, the county attorney and transportation director Chester Clegg all agree that it's a fair price. And then if the owner wants something more than that, then again, we'd have to come back to the Board of Commissioners.
I seek a motion, please?
Motion to approve as stated by the county attorney.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, uh, Sanders, any discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Uh, Lloyd, is this gonna help you out a lot or is it just gonna be?
Well, it's, it's gonna help, it, it will help us, but it also helps the board too. Um, we get an awful lot of small slivers of land that we're paying less than fifteen hundred dollars for in a lot of cases. But, you know, we're having to bring them to the board here and then it also is a delay in time trying to settle with the property owner. And I think the ability to do this will make those transactions go a lot smoother and a lot quicker and speed those projects up a little bit.
So anything over twenty-five thousand dollars?
It's gotta, it's gotta come back to y'all.
Okay, anything under that, you can sign off on it with?
Provided that if it is.
It's within fifteen hundred dollars of the appraised value.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is question is for Lloyd, for those that, um, are under the twenty-five thousand and within that fifteen hundred dollar appraised value, will you actually give the board a report of those?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question if we were able to get that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so, um, should we, could we rephrase this to state the amount, uh, to be read into the record, uh, with the resolution?
Um, you wanna read it, Sam?
I can certainly do that, the, the resolution will be in a minute, so it should, it should include it all if we just approved the resolution.
That's good, Commissioner. That's good, thank you.
Good.
Any, any more? Any more discussion? All in favor? It passed four zero, thank you. Next is item number nineteen. It's Solid Waste Management, um, Authority. It's gonna be you, Kevin?
Kevin.
Okay, discussion, Kevin, if you would, come on up, please. Uh, discussion, consideration of loan agreement with, with, uh, Jifa in amount of, um, three million for a new landfill sale construction loan with associated, um, documents, including a resolution R zero two zero two two one A. Mr. Walters?
Chairman and Commissioners, uh, this, uh, resolution in front of you is, uh, um, a, uh, Jifa loan in the amount of three million dollars that's being sought by the Solid Waste Authority, uh, for the purpose of constructing the next landfill cell at the landfill. Um, the, the Board of Commissioners is the financial guarantor for this bond, uh, and they have to approve this, um, of this, uh, bond for the Solid Waste Authority to receive it. The paperwork includes, uh, all the documents that need to be submitted back to Jifa. The loan has been approved by, by Jifa, um, but the board, before they sign it, has to approve it. So, uh, this and the next item concern this loan and, uh, Attorney, um, Ben Vugnberg, I don't know if you wanna add any more to that?
Go ahead, Sam.
Uh, I would only add that although the county is technically the, uh, entity that is taking out the loan from Jifa, the next item, twenty, uh, provides that the Solid Waste Authority will be the ones actually paying the loan. And, um, so it won't be a drain on the county's funds, it'll be a, an authority expense.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioners, I seek a motion. You wanna wait till the next one before you go? I seek a motion, guys. Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let me try to get this right. Motion to approve a loan agreement with Jifa in the amount of three million dollars for new landfill cell construction, along with associated documents, including resolution R zero two zero two two one A, approving the loan agreement, a promissory note, a loan draw signature card, an authorization agreement for ACH credits and debits, a tax certificate and tax form eight zero three eight dash G.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by, um, Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? Um, Commissioner Cowan and then Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, just a note, uh, regarding the numbering of that, uh, that R zero two oh two two one A, uh, it seems to be the same as the one before that. Sam, is, is there a clerical?
Are you referring to number eighteen?
Yeah, it seems to be the same as, as that, if you're including that A in that.
Sorry, I, um.
Either this one's wrong or the one, or seventeen's wrong.
No, they both, they both are right. They both are right, this A is not included.
I, I suggested putting A on eighteen and then I backtracked and I, and I'm sorry if I gave the wrong impression there, I don't wanna put, I didn't wanna put A on, on number eighteen.
Okay. So what is nineteen then?
Nine, nineteen is included with an A. The first, eighteen is, don't, do not have an A.
Do I need to restate my motion?
First one deals with right-of-way acquisitions, the next one deals with Solid Waste Authority.
But that, that A do, do not belong on, on number eighteen. The attorney just.
Okay.
Said it wrong. Yeah.
Okay. Then that's the same as seventeen?
No.
No, 'cause that's an ordinance, that's, that's a threw me off.
Okay. It's the same number then. Uh, you might wanna.
The, the numbers are based on the calendar. And the, the, the prefix indicates then what the, what it is.
Yeah, I understand. Uh, it would help me to, I think maybe help Jackie too, to have that cleaned up a little bit. You know, I'm talking about, it looks, it looks a little the same.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Any, any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner, um, Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I had been concerned for, for a long time, this, you know, I was concerned about the fact that, um, uh, about, you know, money, we back in money that's, that's being borrowed and being, uh, spent by Solid Waste. I think one was ten million and the other one, and then we asked another grant for three million. Only thing I asked was that how would the public, you know, which to spend money on and how it's being spent? And typically, I know, couldn't seem to get an answer. And secondly, I think, maybe not this particular board, or maybe so, we'd asked at all meetings that the Solid Waste or, or Authority, whomever had, that they be published to the public so they could maybe see what's, some of the items that being talked about? And give a general account of how the money's being spent. And we just don't seem to have that. And if we do, please somebody correct me, 'cause I think it's about ten years I've been talking about it. And, um, I guess I've been kinda talking to myself, but I think we've been held accountable to the citizens of Newton County, especially how the tax dollars are being spent.
Thank you, sir. Any, anyone else? Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing dealing with the, the landfill, when you're talking of like in three million dollars and for a new landfill sale construction and everything like that, if you go to the landfill and see how big that operation is, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's pretty amazing how much they're able to do and, and how much, I hate to say it, but how much waste we have in Newton County that ends up out there. But of co- of course, the landfill, three years ago, four years ago, was broke. And, you know, we're not broke anymore. And we've got, um.
There you go.
The sales in compliance with the EPD. So when it talks about borrowing three million dollars, the Jifa loans and things like that, uh, it sounds like a tremendous amount of money, but if you look at the scope of the operation out there, it's, it's not significant at all. So, um, we are spending everybody's money well, I think.
Uh, Commissioner, um, Henderson?
Yeah, I, I just, I still feel like we, we need to be accountable, it was five dollars. I think that we need to be accountable to the taxpayer, how the money's being spent and they need to know, that's all, I, I mean, 'cause we've got, uh, consultants out there, we've got a whole lot of peoples out there, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're paying, that we don't know nothing about who we're paying and how much we're paying them. And so, uh, I think at some point, you got to be accountability, are we still contributing money from general fund? I mean, if, Lloyd, I guess? Are we still contributing money from general fund to assist in that operation other than, huh?
Yes, we still have debt.
So how much are we, how much are they paying us back? Zero, I can tell you that one. So it's accountability to the taxpayers' money, that's all.
Well, at, at this point, we're helping to pay the debt on that bond, we're not paying the full debt on it, but we are assisting. Three hundred and thirty thousand, I believe it is a year, is that right? It may be a little bit more than that, Kev, my memory may be bad, but.
It's about twice that much, Lloyd.
About six hundred thousand, okay.
Again, it's, it's, it's trying to get the landfill up and operational. It was not op, I mean, funding wise, it was not operational, it was, it was running into the hole every year.
I understand that, all the thing I'm saying is shouldn't there be accountability if I'm spending two dollars, if somebody wanted to know how it's being spent, well, I saw paid, uh, running, uh, Commissioner Cowan, two dollars. It should be accessible to the public.
Well, it is, I mean, we get a financial statement every year.
How can it, how can it, hey guys, hey guys, hey guys, hey guys? Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
That basically was my question when he was asking, where is the information that we can access it? I apologize if I'm not aware, um, where can we find the financial statements?
Uh, Commissioner, every month, uh, the Solid Waste Authority is given in their meeting packet, a detailed financial statement of the, of status of the finances, that's in the public record and it's available on the website. And so all that information's available and any citizen, of course, could come to those meetings and ask any questions, uh, that they had about that statement. It shows what's spent on every item, uh, what, what the cash balance is for the, the account and the, uh, the authority members are briefed by myself and others, uh, the finance director on, uh, the progress we're making. And, and we are making great progress to, to, uh, improve our, our cash balance and we're on a very good track. Uh, and as, uh, as Commissioner Cowan pointed out, four years ago, we were on the opposite track. So, uh, we believe we're doing very well. We still have to carefully watch our money, as Commissioner Henderson points out.
And my other concern was kinda question about, uh, the public being able to see, I did have constituents that actually wanted to attend your meeting and I did ask the young lady who sent out the notice about there being a Zoom, 'cause we are still in a pandemic, so many people are kinda afraid to, as you can see in here, to come into those meetings, so they would like for it to at least be streaming on Zoom, so they could participate or watch what's going on with the Solid Waste Authority. So will that be in effect for your next meeting?
Uh, that'll be up to the authority and, and we'll also make a suggestion to them, uh, that we could do that if, if, uh, if they choose to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? Oh, no, 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 all in. No, 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 no. All in, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. It passes 4 to 1. Yeah, this is going hand to hand. Kev, you want to stay up here for the next one?
That's...
Item number 20.
Sam, can you explain this? You've already explained it, but could you re-explain?
Sure. So right around the time the authority was reconstituted, the authority and the county put in place an IGA that basically transferred a lot of authority, solid waste authority, from the county to the solid waste authority. And one of the items in that IGA was a provision that the, the authority would pay an existing Jifa loan that was taken out in 2017 or something. We're simply amending that IGA to provide that with this new Jifa loan, the authority will pay and the county will take out the loan.
Guys, I seek a motion, please.
So move that stated by the county attorney?
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
End of discussion, guys. All in favor? All opposed? It passes 4 to 1. Thank you. Thank you, Kev, for being here tonight. Next is item number 21, Water Resources, Discussion, Consideration of Resolution R-020221B. Mr. Kerr?
This is the Jifa loan that I mentioned earlier this evening. It's a $12 million loan to do work on the Williams Street plant. James, if you want to add anything to that. This was a low-cost loan. It's the 0.86%. So it's a very, very, very low-cost loan for us.
Yeah, this is a 12 million dollar loan to renovate the Williams Street facility. We entered an agreement several months ago with a 50-year agreement with the city of Covington. That was a major concern about putting the, the amount of money into the infrastructure, is getting a long-term agreement with the city of Covington, and that has been accomplished.
Thank you. Commissioner, I seek a motion. I get a motion on the floor. Seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. If my, if my memory is serving right, this, the Williams Street, we made an, an agreement with the city of Covington, and I think it was supposed to have been like a dollar a year. Is it any more, or are we still at that?
Yeah, it's just, it's just an agreement. There's no...
Okay, so we don't even, we don't even pay the dollar. Okay, so by, this, this, this plan that you request 12 million dollars, is it going to increase any capability of it to purify more water, or just make aesthetic, make it look better?
It would make the, the plant structurally sound and, and able to, to treat the 4, 4.5 million gallons a day that it currently is operating.
So right now, is treating, are we treating how many at this moment? Are we treating how many are possible?
Right now, we're probably treating about 4 to 5 million gallons a month.
Okay.
So right now, it's, it's just not at its full capacity because it needs some, a lot of tears.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Thank you, James. Next, Attorney Sam. Resolution R-020221E.
Thank you, Chairman. So, and you should have all received sort of a separate package from Jackie, which contains a cover letter to the local delegation, along with the resolution, and a proposed legislation that relates to the resolution. So the request would be to approve both the resolution and authorization to deliver this draft legislation to the local delegation, basically approving the whole package. The subject of the resolution is the potential creation of a new Newton County judicial circuit, which would entail Newton County splitting off from the existing Alcovei judicial circuit, which it shares with Walton County. The resolution expresses the commissioner's desire to establish such a new Newton County judicial circuit, to have three Superior Court judges on that circuit, and to set the terms of the court being 2nd and 3rd Mondays in January, April, July, and October. The attached draft legislation goes into a bit more detail about how that new circuit would be set up. However, this is only draft legislation, which we would send to the local delegation. It doesn't mean that this is the final form of the legislation. And thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. I have a second. It's been motioned by... And you can if you would like. You want to? You can read it. You can read it. No, you can read it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move, make a motion that we consider or approve the resolution R-020221E, which is the resolution seeking local delegation support to create a single county circuit, the Newton County, or the Newton Circuit.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders. Yeah, okay. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders. End of discussion. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I think, if I'm not mistaken, Rockdale has a state judge or something to that effect. We have, if this is approved, we possibly have a same.
Yep.
Okay. The next question is, is how much would it cost us to, because we would have to budget it. So how much would it cost the taxpayers in Newton County?
Mr. Kerr, can you, can you explain the way the judges get paid and how much the county supplements?
The, the judges, the bulk of their salaries are paid by the state. The county does have a local supplement, and I believe it's right around $25,000 for each of the judges. I, I, I'm not exactly sure on the number, but I believe it's around that number. The other employees over there, some are fully paid by the county, some are paid by the state with a local supplement, and some are fully paid by the state. So I don't know that, that I don't believe it will have significant impact on our budget, because assuming the same personnel will be there, there may be a need to add some personnel, but we really have not done an analysis on that. But I believe that there, those would be few in number.
Can you also, for the DA, so we...
Yeah, right. And the DA, you know, we, the same thing there. DA is paid by the state. A number of the ADAs are partially paid by the state, partially paid by the county. There's a few of them that are completely paid by the county. And again, with some of the administrative people and the victim's assistance and so forth, some of their salaries are split. And assuming those people would stay here, I don't see where it would have a really significant impact on our, on our budget.
One last question. So when might, if this, if this is approved, might the district attorney and, and whomever, the judges, when might they, would they have to go for reelection? Or would you just pull the ones that represent Newton? Or would it be, did we brought him for, for an election?
I don't really know. Maybe Sam could answer that one a little bit better than I could for you, Commissioner.
With respect to the judges, Judge McCamey, Judge Zahn, and Judge Nguyen would be the three judges on the court, and they would basically sit until their next election term comes up. With respect to the DA, the... I don't, I don't actually know when their next election would be, but 2022 sounds reasonable.
What if it turns? A four-year term?
Four, yeah, sorry, four-year term. That would be, that would remain exactly the same. And with respect to the DA, the governor in this draft legislation would appoint a DA starting July 1, 2021, for a term ending December 31, 2022, and then at the 2022 general election, a new DA would get elected.
Can I add just one thing? You know, for years, I have kind of, I have lobbied for us having our own judicial system here in, in Newton County, because I felt like, you know, and I remember one meeting I was at, party meeting, everybody know what I'm talking about, and they were saying, well, I'm going to run for this, and said, but, I said, you run. And I said, but when it comes to Walton County, you lose. And so, but make it long story short, I think this is a good day in, in Newton County, where we can ask for and hopefully receive our own or elected judges, district attorney, right here in Newton County. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to get clarity. I think Lloyd or Sam actually answered this question. So no one's salary will be affected by this actual resolution if it's approved?
Right. So this, this proposed legislation says that all the, the current salary supplements would remain in place and just paid by Newton County?
And, and to clarify, Lloyd, that, that the county can absorb their costs, is that correct?
Right. I mean, I, whatever our supplements are, and they would remain the same. I can't see why they would change. There would be no reason for us to change.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I guess my first question is, other than what Commissioner Henderson just said, somebody wanting to get elected to a different office, and they can't because Walton County's in the, in the mix, what, what are our reasons for, what are our reasons for doing this?
You want me? You want me? Well, Commissioner, I will be fir, I'll be the first one to say that, you know, that there's a, that our circuit is, is already overloaded. Our county is, our county is well over 100,000 people. Walton County is now over 100,000 people. Rockdale County is not quite 100,000 people yet, but they are almost at 100,000 people. They have their own circuit. A county not, not that far from here, Columbia County, is pretty similar to our county, and they just submitted to have theirs, their own circuit, and, and actually just passed through the Senate on yesterday. So Newton County is, I mean, Newton County is no different. Newton County is, is, is not standing still. It's, it's continually growing, and I think the time is for Newton County to actually have its own circuit as well.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So you mentioned workload. I, you know, I spoke to, to our DA today, and I spoke to a judge today, and our, our circuit is, is processing more cases than probably anybody in the state right now, even during the COVID crisis. I don't, I don't, well, I do understand exactly what's happening, but, you know, we've, we were all okay when we were having the say in the elections, and now that we're not, we're not okay. I just want to call it what it is. I, I know exactly what this is. So, and everybody else does too. So I'll just leave my comments with that, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hold up. Commissioner, Commissioner Cowan, then Commissioner Henderson. No, no, you're fine.
Ms. Chairman, I don't know if I should even, because I'm a member of the bar, a member of the Alcovei circuit. So I probably could abstain in this. However, I think it's, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I'd qualify for an extension on this. I do think it's going to have a substantial impact on the judicial system, and I think you ought to, there ought to be a discussion with the judges and the district attorney as to what they, I don't know what the numbers are over there. I don't know if they're handling, handling it well or not, but I would suggest that we table this until you, as chairman, have an opportunity to discuss with the judges and the district attorney what the impact of this type of decision would be.
Thank you, sir. There's a, there's a, there's a motion on the floor. Commissioner Edwards.
Would it be appropriate to make a substitute motion now, or does it have to wait till this motion?
I would say let's just vote on this one, and if it fails, we can entertain a substitute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also did have an opportunity to speak to some of the judges, and they're stating that they can handle the caseload just for Newton County. So I know that for sure, that they can handle just the Newton County caseload with the attorneys or with the judges that are already there. So I just wanted to put that out there. Since that was a question, it has been stated that they can handle the caseload for just Newton County.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Just a quick question. This, this would not affect our public defender with it, or our juvenile, which the gentleman just came, and he talked about he was older. I guess state of Georgia or something. It wouldn't affect our juvenile court or anything. All of it would remain the same, if I'm, if I'm thinking right.
He talking about that commission for juveniles, just, that, that, just our circuit.
Yeah, my, my understanding is it wouldn't affect anything other than the division of the court.
Anyone else? Commissioner Sanders.
Maybe Sam, if you, for the record, can explain what happens if this pass was the process?
Okay. So obviously, it's, there's a long way between us passing this resolution and it becoming law. What would happen next is the packet that you have, the chairman would basically sign it, forward it to the various local delegation representatives who are listed on the front page. Then I guess they would consider whether they want to advance the ball and possibly circle back and, and have discussions with us if they want to make significant changes to the proposed legislation. And then I guess it goes through the legislative process, which I don't know how long that will take, maybe a couple of months.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Legally, I could make a substitute motion, right, Sam? At this time, I'd like to make a substitute motion. We tabled this, this item for 60 days so we can understand the jobs impacted, the, the real expenses. Job, Lloyd made some, some high-level assumptions, and they understand the caseload for the entire circuit. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a second for that. It's been motioned by Commissioner, it's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards on a substitute motion, and second by Commissioner Cowan. All in favor? All opposed? The motion failed for lack of support. I'm going back to the original motion, which was put on the floor by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders. by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders. All in favor? All opposed? It passed two, three. I mean, it passed three, two, I'm sorry. Next on the agenda is discrete light petitions. Steamwood subdivision, Resolution R-020221C. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution for streetlights. Typically, we'll have a developer approach us about putting streetlights in. And this is, as a subdivision's being developed. What this will do essentially sets up a taxing district. And these people would be, or would stand them out to a taxing district. The people who are living in that subdivision are assessed a fee for the lights and a fee for the electricity for the lights. And that is typically put on their tax bill. And then it's spread equally among the property owners in that subdivision.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the streetlight petitions for Steamwood subdivision, R-020221C, which is a resolution provided for the installation of streetlights and the assessment of the annual cost of maintaining and operating said lights against properties served by those lights in District Two.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion, guys? All in favor? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next is Windbrook subdivision, Mr. Kerr, Resolution R-020221D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is a request for a, for streetlights in the Windbrook subdivision. And again, this will be, a charge, a fee will be assessed to all of the property owners within that subdivision for the operation and maintenance of the streetlights that'll be placed there.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve a resolution provided for the installation of streetlights, the assessment of annual cost of maintaining and operating said lights against properties served by those lights. And that resolution is R-020221D.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next is the final reading. Convenience Store, Inc., doing business at Jones Petroleum, Covington 387, Highway 11 North, Social Circle, Georgia 30025. Owner, Jones Petroleum, Kenneth R. Johnson. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve the final reading of Convenience Store, as stated by the county chairman.
Okay, all right. Okay. Wow. Can I get a second, please? A second. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments. Guys, you have three minutes to do so. At this time, please come, state your name and your address for the record, please. Citizen comments? Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Cowan? Commissioner Edwards? Thank you. Commissioner Henderson? Any commission comments? Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have a statement that I want to read into the minutes. And I'll get that to Ms. Jackie. After our most recent Public Facilities Authority meeting held on January the 19th, 2021, there were some negative and misleading media published within Newton County. This media referenced holding the bond funding for the number four fire station hostage. I would like to clarify that this is the farthest from the truth. In 2020, I supported and voted for the new fire station to be built. I understand the need of establishing more fire safety throughout Newton County. Therefore, the funding for this fire station will be approved. This proves my point that the fire station was never being held hostage as publicized. We say that we are one Newton, but I have seen far too many times where members of this board aren't exemplifying this slogan. We must understand as a community, all projects have value. Rather it is categorized as economic development, parks and recreation, or establishing infrastructure, it should be noted that all projects have value. Citizens in all districts pay property taxes and deserve an enhanced quality of life within all five districts. It is disingenuous to state that recreation is less important than other projects. I invite all of our citizens, as well as each of my fellow commissioners, to go back to the Newton County website and read the strategic plan that was voted on and implemented in 2019. Under the Enhanced Quality of Life section, it states, "Provide non-traditional programming options for family and youth, such as health and nutrition classes, yoga, pickleball, and boot camps, parks and recreation. Host youth engagement activities in various parks throughout the county, such as Kids Wildlife Day, Fun Days, and Youth Skills and Drills, Parks and Recreation." Therefore, recreational facilities and activities are indeed important to the citizens of Newton County as written in our current strategic plan. I would personally like to see our county manager find grants, state dollars, corporate sponsors, or seek investment dollars from our municipalities that will be willing to invest in the strategic plan implementation, since all of Newton County, along with the citizens from our local municipalities, will greatly benefit from this center. I was elected to not only serve District Two, but to serve the entire citizenship of Newton County. I hope that this statement brings clarity to the matters needed to be addressed amongst this board and that we will move forward in the spirit of unity and progression. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders? Guys, thank you so much. I don't think there's a need for executive session tonight. Thank you so much for being here and caring about your community and staying here until the duration of the meeting. Thank you so much. I seek a motion that we adjourn. Commissioner Henderson? Who seconded? It's a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor?
Well, you kept your promise to me. We got out before midnight.
Ah, yeah, you did. Yeah. Right before midnight.